All right. All right, seeing the hour of 6:30 having arrived, I'll call the Tuesday, December 17th council meeting to order. Heather, if you'd please call the roll.
Neil Hicks?
Here.
Lisa Dossie Smith?
Here.
Breann Brown?
Here.
Patrick Singer?
Here.
Brian Shannon?
Here.
Greg Myschak?
Here.
Orin Smith?
Here.
All right, we are all here, so if everybody would rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next up we have approval of the agenda. Is there any repositioning of the agenda that anybody would like to ask for or a motion to approve as printed?
Would move item 16 up to the top.
Item 16, which would be the discussion on Stair and Road closure. Do you want to move that after public comment or where do you want to, where would you?
Yeah, right after.
Okay, so we'd move it in front of 11, which is the late discussion, okay. Any objection to that and, all right, is there a motion to approve with that modification?
Move approval.
All right, moved by Shannon, seconded by Brown?
Second, yeah. I went before Lisa said something.
To approve the cons, or to approve the agenda, any further discussion? All right, Heather, if you please call the roll.
Singer?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Myschak?
Aye.
Dossie Smith?
Aye.
All right, that motion is approved and we have an agenda. So next up we have the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to add or remove from the consent agenda at this time?
Second.
Oh, hold on, Neil.
I'd like to move item 16 into the, I'm sorry, item 15 into consent agenda.
So this is discussion of possible action regarding purchase of single axle plow truck instead of replacing the quad axle dump truck as listed in 2025.
I couldn't sum it up better than that sentence right there, it is exactly that.
Any objection to that? All right, so Lisa, your motion was to approve with that modification? And Brian seconded that. All right, any council questions or comments on anything on the consent agenda? Any public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? All right, anybody online, Greg or Orin, did you have anything?
No, nope.
No.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Heather, if you'd please read the roll.
Roll or you want me to read the consent?
Oh, sorry, read the consent agenda.
Okay. Approval of common council meeting minutes from November 19th, 2024. Police and Fire Commission meeting minutes from November 18th, 2024. Lakes Advisory meeting minutes from September 11th, 2024. Public Works Committee meeting minutes from November 12th, 2024. The November 2024 financials. And 15, the purchase of a single axle plow truck instead of replacing the quad axle dump truck as listed in 2024, CIP budget.
All right, and then if you call the roll on that.
Dossie Smith?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Myschak?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
All right, that motion is approved. Next we'll turn it over to our city manager with his bi-weekly report.
Recognizing we have a lot to get to, I will be brief. In Public Works, as far as administration, there were meetings for TDS, the library and the PD Evidence Garage. We have reviewed a lease agreement for a cell tower and had pre-qualification statements for the lead service line project, which is our multimillion dollar project we'll be undertaking. Streets helped with parade setup, blocked off the streets and cleanup. We're continuing to street sweep with the lack of snow and deal with brush chipping, tree removal and other stump grinding as the weather allows. Water Department replaced some chemical feed lines. They're working with TDS on installations and locates on Jefferson Street for future reconstruction. And in the wastewater department, they're working on a pump seal replacement and we ordered a spare set of seals. Good, the right thing to do. IT, 60 tickets closed. Chris and Tim both attended a Wisconsin Digital Government Summit. Tim was a presentee and Chris was a participant. They also went forward and extended an offer for the junior IT position. They received 15 applicants and we're hoping to have Andrew Schwartz start soon. He's a sophomore at UWW seeking his Bachelor's of Science in Information Technology, Networking and Security. So, good find. In the Police Department, Ryan Officer Kozlowski and Cody Schenker graduated from the 720-hour Law Enforcement Academy and returned to us, so that's great, they're pictured above. And the Police Department teamed up with the Fire Department to host Shop with a Hero. Six elementary school students had the opportunity to meet Santa, shop with our first responders, ride in the emergency vehicles and wrap their presents back at the Police Department. Special thank you to Walmart and Generac for their financial support of the event. In the Fire Department, staff responded to 35 calls between November 28th and December 4th, making the daily average five calls for service. Five calls required paid-on-call response and mutual aid was not requested from Whitewater during that time. For Thursday, December 5th through Wednesday, December 11th, staff responded to 38 calls, making the daily average just over five calls for service. Four calls for service required paid-on-call response and mutual aid was not requested during that time. The library expansion project continues moving right along, some of the construction is pictured. The crew will be working without the, working throughout the winter months, pausing only when there are several feet of snow or the temperature is below zero. Their new scheduling and event calendar, the library, went live on December 12th. Patrons can now reserve the study room and make space equipment from the website. It's the same calendar that all the libraries in the Bridges system utilize. Parks and Recreation, Cookies with Santa was this past Saturday and it was a big success, so thanks to everyone who helped with that. Kids enjoyed activities decorating cookies and sipping milk generously donated by the Katzman Family Farms. And also don't miss out on the fun this week, this Friday is the chili cook-off. Come down to the Crevalath Lakefront Building to sample some of the best chili creations our community has to offer. Little Dribblers and Shooting Stars are wrapping up this Saturday. They had an excellent program run by Bob Schramm and Jerry Thune, Casey Lyon and Matthew Carolo. Youth Gym is still continuing every Wednesday from 6:15 to 8:00 PM at the Armory. Media Services filmed and edited 10 videos and they continue working with the Bridging Whitewater Group to discuss potential upcoming videos and you can see our social media outreach on the screen. Human Resources, they've been conducting phone and in-person interviews for the junior IT position. Also, we're thrilled to announce that Megan Groan has accepted the role of WAFC Manager. She brings a wealth of aquatic experience working with the YMCA, UW Whitewater and UW Madison. She'll join us early January. Our holiday season also kicks off with a storm of festivities designed to storm, spreading cheer and community spirit. We've done a food and coat drive supporting the Little Library Food Bank. Holiday treat baskets went out recently, delivered to every location. And we're having a festive holiday lunch coming up. And also you may have seen the Where's Sunny the Snowman, maybe you didn't, the event that took place for staff. The City of Whitewater will be continuing to spread Christmas cheer loud and clear for all to hear. This was totally written by Sarah. In Economic Development, we conducted two business recruitment and expansion visits. Our Economic Development Director spoke with demolition companies that responded to the RFP for 126 North Jefferson. Additionally, we're consulting with the DNR about potential grants for that project and other future demolition projects. Neighborhood Services staff collaborated with the Landmarks Commission to issue a press release about the ad hoc committee to discuss the future of the water tower. So for people who are interested in that, please talk with the Landmarks Committee. The PARC met on the 9th and it was announced that the Hamilton House has new owners who plan on transforming the building into a wedding venue. And additionally, a conditional use permit was granted to Lopez for opening an auto repair shop at 265 South Wisconsin Street. Around Whitewater, Christmas in Crevalath is in full swing. I hope everyone gets a chance to see that. Staff worked really hard and we're really happy with their efforts on that. As always, the Chief of Staff's information is there, that's Becky. And for anyone who wants to reach out to me, that's my contact information. And with that, I return it back to you.
Thank you, John, and thank you Kevin and Michelle and everybody that put all that hard work into Christmas at Crevalath. The launch of it was very good and, you know, it looks like something, a tradition that hopefully will will be continuing and growing and just appreciate all the hard work that staff volunteers and our sponsors put into that. All right, next up we have staff reports. So the first two are city attorneys, so we have an update on public hearings for resolutions and competitive bidding process. So Jonathan, I'll turn it over to you and you can just kind of.
Sure, thank you, I'll be brief with both of these since it's, most of the information is just contained in both the memorandums. So for the first one regarding the public hearing requirements for resolutions, the answer to that is generally there's no legal requirement for municipalities to hold a public hearing before adopting a proposed resolution. Typically, public hearings are only required if mandated by state or federal law, so it really depends on what the resolution is concerning to know if a public hearing is required. However, under our transparency ordinance, we include resolutions in our agendas for council meetings. Gives the public an opportunity still to comment on those resolutions if they wish to do so. Going on to, oh, sorry.
Any questions on that for Jonathan?
All right, and then the competitive bidding process, again, I did a memorandum since some questions have come up in past meetings as to when public bidding is needed and when you have to take the lowest responsible bidder. So generally speaking, it applies to public construction contracts exceeding $25,000 with the requirement of giving the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. I did list a number of exceptions to that rule. The one that's come up most recently is professional services as those are not considered public construction, obviously, and selection is typically based on qualifications rather than the cost.
All right, any questions on that item? All right, next up we have debriefing on 2024 general election, so Heather, I'll turn it over to you.
The survey was in the packet along with my memo. Every one pretty much had the same feedback. Obviously, the long lines. Some of the Badger Book performance with training and things like that. Do you want me to go through this piece by piece or, I mean, I'm putting things in place as we speak. Badger Books are being hardwired, so there will be no more talking to each other through the air, so I can hook up more. So that will solve that as far as how many I can have working at one time. I'm putting training in place pretty much monthly. Just to get that, like a second reflex, just to get people registered or checked in pretty flawlessly. There are some things that I will have to work through, obviously the food and the breaks and having more people. I will put out a post to get more volunteers. Probably the first of the year, so I can get them into those trainings. What if there were any specific questions?
On the Badger Book usage, I just had heard, you know, up at the campus location, especially with the amount of new, same-day registrations and address changes, do we potentially, before the next large election, which isn't until the fall of 2026, do we need to make additional investment in additional books for those just to provide some bandwidth so that it's not, I think there were seven total, but.
I have enough for... The county and the state both agree that you need 700, or you need seven per 800 voters. So, and that's registered voters, so I'm double that in the city. I have the 12, I have four more, that's 16, and one is, so I have 17 total. I think if I maybe put more, now that I can hardwire them, put the 10 or 11 at.
Campus.
Campus and, but I can see how the governor goes with those, you know, splitting them up like that. And then if need be, I can still get them in time for presidential.
What are they, about 2,500 bucks a piece?
Yeah, they're not.
Okay, so not an insurmountable thing to get our hands on if we need to.
Correct.
Okay.
And if you're moving into the 2026 budget year, we can always look at the budget to increase. So, any other council questions here? And I will open up to public comment and we'll get to our folks online. So Breann, you had a.
Yeah, so I saw some of it in the comments, but I also had talked to some people at the university and have you had any conversations with them about expanding their capacity on their internet? Because it sounded like, the feedback I got was that their system was running slowly, their internet system.
I didn't get any feedback on their particular internet. Our Badger Books don't use the internet. It could have been, I don't know if the students, the Badger Books are not hooked up to the internet at all.
Okay.
So, maybe the students getting on their, my vote or the, what do you call it? To look up their voter registrat, not their voter registration, but their address.
Well, it could have, yeah, it could have been wins or just getting into my vote, so my understanding is that was very, very slow.
Okay, no, I can look into that definitely, to see if something can be done prior, boost it. I also, IT let me know that at the Armory, this guest wifi can be put over there as well, so it'll be a lot easier for people to log in at the Armory to get their wins account information as well. I was not aware of that prior to the election.
First, I just want to say thank you to you and Tiffany and everybody that helped because regardless of what actually happened, without you guys to do it, it would have been a disaster. So, it was a tough day, but I think it was managed properly and we got done what we need to get done. I think having 1,500 to 2,000 people standing in the halls of the UW, like I said, Badger Books aren't on the internet, but they couldn't get into the wins app because I think every kid there was on their phone. And half of them, their phone were dead before they got up to the Badger Book because they've been sitting on it for the last two hours. So, I think they're all sitting there, that's why the wifi was just crawling. They couldn't, the wins app to get their registration information was taking five to 10 minutes each. So, at the end of the day, more Badger Books are great, but I think it was just a, it's a people problem. You know, they, the students every four years will be mostly new, non-registered or have to re-register to a new location. And most of them were just, as someone that sat at the university, they were just not ready for it. A lot of them had the information, like half of it, but then, oh yeah, I'll pull it up on my wins app. Then you find out that it's taking you 10 minutes, so you gotta go stand over here on the side and you gotta wait. Or, my phone's dying, can you look it for me up? It was, it was a people problem and.
Sure.
That's just more education, I think, to them, you know. How we do that, I don't know, but I think at the end of the day, we just gotta get them the information and they're gonna have to make that decision and fix some of those things themselves. So, I don't think that should be a negative outlook on how the election was run or on you guys. So, I think you did a good job with what we had and try it again in two years. Thank you.
Definitely learned a lot.
Any other council comments?
There was a mention of scanning ballots and that scanners weren't working. Does that seem like a fairly straightforward solution to get those working? Scanning barcodes to check in the absentee ballots?
Yes, I will work with, some of them, scanning on the absentees, because we had so many, the barcodes were like two lines, so we couldn't scan those. There was no way we could do those. Driver's license, if driver's license, if you are not registered exactly what your driver's license says, it will not come up no matter what. I did calibrate all the scanners prior to the election at, when I set them up at UW and the Armory, but I will work with Wisconsin Election Commission to figure something else out. I don't.
And I could imagine too, if you're scanning driver's licenses, those addresses probably are not what the campus address is.
Right, but, I mean, it should still bring them up and they can change the address.
Got it.
It could be an address change if they are registered as the name states on the license.
Anything else? Greg or Orin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope, nothing to add.
No.
At this point, I know this has been a topic that public comment has been generated from before, so at this time I'll open this item up for public comments. from before, so at this time, I'll open this item up for public comments. If anybody has any public comments, just come up to the podium and state your name and address. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is update from Media Services on audiovisual system updates in the council chamber. So Becky wrote the memo, but John, I don't, see Becky here?
Yeah.
Do you want to just touch on it? I mean, we have the memo in our packet, if you want to make a couple comments.
Yeah, so we don't have financial estimates yet, because I believe we're still waiting.
No, the estimates are in there.
Oh, good, okay, sorry, I didn't get that far into it.
For my part of it, yes.
Okay, so essentially, what we need you guys to decide, and none of these are must-haves, is if you want to make upgrades, what direction you would like us to go so we can put together, like a full package. And Neil, I think, not to put you on the spot, this was a topic we had initiated, and then staff did some research, so if you give us, the council could give us some priorities on what the most important things to them to replace are and where we should start, because all this would have to be budgeted then.
Yep. I like what I see in here. Obviously, there's multiple options, and some of it, you know, the desk mics with the displays, and I don't know for such a small community that we need something that geeky.
Yep, yep.
We don't need to push the buttons to talk, I mean, we can talk pretty well amongst ourselves, but I do like, you see, like, there's a, you know, a 75-inch TV, so it can display things or, you know, agenda items, certainly that, and then some of the, I mean, the mics that are on here, they're noise-canceling, you know, like, just when you're announcing it, you can hear the feedback already, so just new technology, the feedback, fixing that. Seems like we have the Zoom audio fixed, where we can hear them, they can hear us without the feedback. So I think we're on the right track, I just, like I said, I don't know that we need all the functions of that, but in general...
So basically, TVs and better microphones without, but we don't need all the button technology and all that?
Right.
Okay. What else? I think the TVs is a good idea, honestly, we can, we've talked about putting them on the two walls, so the people sitting in the audience can have a view, and then we can put another one for the council.
Yep. In general, that was, that's pretty much the biggest things. Let's say Zoom, Zoom seems to be getting better, so...
So better mics, TVs, not so much worried about advanced technology.
Right.
It's all we needed, we can put something better together, and then come with an actual proposal, and where it would be budgeted, and how we would take care of it.
Any other comments? Otherwise, yeah, Neil, I think covered, covered what I was thinking, so. All right, next up, we have Public Works, Brad with Wisconsin DNR Sanitary Survey Report.
Yes, so the DNR visited our water department, looked at our facilities, equipment, operation, other items. They asked staff to share this report with the government officials, so that is why it's in your packet. We had no significant deficiencies, and only one deficiency, which was fixed the next day. And the other thing that the report indicated, that the utility has had an excellent record in compliance with monitoring and reporting requirements to the DNR. So if there's any questions on that report, I'll take them, otherwise, you have it.
Any questions for Brad? All right. So that concludes our staff reports. Next up, we have Hearing of Citizen Comments. No formal council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised may be compared to a future agenda, and participants are allowed a three-minute speaking period, and although specific items listed on the agenda may not be discussed at this time, we do allow for public input when those items come up for debate. So if there's anything not on the agenda anybody wished to speak on tonight, just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right, anybody online? Oh, packed house, so it takes a little bit...
That's pretty loud.
Starting with some feedback, as you're talking about on the mics too.
Yeah. All right, Michael Smith, 327 East Clay Street, Unit 29. I have three quick topics. The first two are kind of related. I just wanted to say the Christmas stuff is awesome, and I just, since I'm up here, I might as well say it. And the second thing is, I'm excited about the chili contest, and I have awesome chili. And then the third comment is regarding the water tower, and I, you know, I know, and it's not on the agenda, and I do have, I do have a quick comment on that, and I will be reaching out to the appropriate people regarding this, and I have mentioned it to a couple council members as well. You know, I am of the opinion that it should not be that hard, and I don't know where the status is, but I do want to make the comment that, that, you know, if every single person had voted for that water tower, were to put in a couple hundred bucks, it'd be over, and if you're not willing to put in a couple hundred bucks, you probably shouldn't have voted for it. And that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, any other comment on anything not on the agenda? And Brad, you said nobody's online, or nobody's raising anyone. All right, so now we'll return to our regularly scheduled agenda, which we had moved up item number 16 to be taken up next, which is discussion and possible action regarding the closure of Staren Road behind, or between Prairie Street and Warhawk Drive to vehicular traffic. So Brad, I'll let you kind of go over kind of where things are at, what the DPW or Public Works Committee had, we'll open it up to some council debate, and then I know, obviously, there's probably some public comment on this item, so we'll turn it over to that, and then bring it back to council for final consideration and discussion. So Brad, I'll let you start it off. I know there's a lot in our packet on this, but...
Yep, so in brief, we did close Staren Road Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM from October 7th to the 18th. We did have cameras up on, the city had cameras up on Main Street and on Schwager for the four-week period, October 7th to November 1st. Results of that was that there is an average of 540 more vehicles per day on Main Street and 840 more vehicles per day on Schwager between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Increase of 6.3% and 68% respectively on those two streets. I asked for comments from all the city departments. The general consensus from city staff is that we would like to see Staren Road remain open. This was discussed at the Public Works Meeting. The university wasn't in attendance. They did have some cameras on Prairie Street, where they showed an increase of approximately only 40 vehicles per day while Staren was closed, but on Prince Street, there was approximately 400 vehicles per day. After discussion, comments from the university and others in attendance, the Public Works Committee did recommend approval to move forward with the closure of Staren Road. That's a quick synopsis.
And at this point, I, you know, this is a university request, so I would open it up to any representative from the university, just to give their perspective, since it is technically their request, just so we can hear that first, and then we'll bring it back to council. So if there are any questions council members have of the university staff, we know kind of who to ask.
Good evening, I am Brenda Jones. I am the Vice Chancellor for Finance and Administrative Affairs at UW Whitewater. I want to thank the Common Council and the staff at the City of Whitewater for allowing us to explore this opportunity for creating a safe pedestrian walkway on our campus. This is my fifth meeting that I have been to, and that I've been allowed to talk and present to either the DPW Committee or the Common Council, and all of these meetings, we have heard comments for both for and against this initiative, and you will likely hear the same tonight, and I'd like to speak to that. First of all, we're, we talk about incidents. It was stated that there's a perceived safety concern, because there have not been any incidents on Staren, but there have been on Main Street. It's only perceived until something happens, and I do not want to be that person who has to tell the family that's impacted by an incident that we never did anything, because we did not perceive that there was a safety issue. I do not know enough details about all the incidents on Main Street to know if they occurred during the daytime hours or nighttime, on weekends or weekdays, I'm only familiar with one of them. But we have heard multiple accounts of near misses on Staren during the busiest hours of the day, and it is no secret that the area of Staren that we are trying to address has the most concentrated foot traffic in the city. We should feel very fortunate that there have not been any tragic incidents on Staren Road. As an added benefit to this proposal, this would also allow us as a campus to redirect our limited resources to other crossings that desperately need to be addressed, such as the very busy Staren Road crosswalk just west of Warhawk Drive that is currently unstaffed, or the intersection of North Prairie and Staren Road, where there has been an incident. Reduced police response times, so I want to, I read the comments that were submitted regarding the reduced emergency response times that reflected one to two minutes delay. I will never, never minimize the importance of emergency response times, let me make that clear, because if I'm the one waiting for help, you're not going to be able to get there fast enough. But if you've read these comments, you will note that the issue was not the closure, but the fact that the closure was temporary, and the individual actually forgot about it. To base a claim that all incidents will have a slower response time because someone forgot a road was closed is misleading. A regular, more permanent closure would not be forgotten. The rest of the comments were solely based on hypothetical could-or-might scenarios with no factual support. It's also important to note that the trial period did not have the fully automated equipment or technology that is known to accommodate road access in emergency situations. We discussed this with both police and fire during a DPW committee meeting, and based on those conversations, I am not convinced that response times will be slowed. Inconvenience and congestion, Staren is one of two east-west streets that goes across the city. To clarify, the inconvenience referenced would be for the individuals traveling from Tratt through the heart of a busy campus to Highway 59 or the industrial park, but only during the week and only during the academic year. Well, that inconvenience already exists from September through May, when there is a constant flood of pedestrians crossing Staren Road, so there is already an inconvenience there. There's a lot of inconveniences in this world that were created for safety reasons. Every time you fly in a plane, you're subject to searches and delays. Try to enter a K-12 building when school is in session and go through the entry process to get through the locked doors. And on a smaller scale, you have to wear a seatbelt or have a smaller child in a special car seat. What happened when those rules changed? We adjusted, and it became a norm. You may not still feel, personally feel that those steps are necessary, but I guarantee that you will when you are the one directly impacted by the reason that that inconvenience exists. Road closures are an inconvenience that happens all the time, thus the terms "orange barrel season." Fremont was recently under construction for months, and my understanding of the same will be happening near the high school in the upcoming year. The Staren Road closure is a proposed inconvenience that happens when classes are in session and is created for safety. So then we talk about local residents who were actually inconvenienced, and what does the data actually show? It showed that the majority of traffic that rerouted to either Main Street or Schwager is clearly related to UW students and employees. The number of additional cars on Main Street corresponds to the increased number on Prince Street, they're both around the 400, 500, 400, 400 to 500 car mark, and Schwager, which is an underutilized street, took on the majority of the traffic that was rerouted. Schwager is not an east-west city corridor. The primary reason to travel on that street is to get the park, to the parking lots in the middle of campus. So who did we really inconvenience? I would have to argue that disproportionately, it was the university students and the employees, not what is referred to as the local residents of the city. It was the individuals driving to and from campus. And please don't forget, our students are local residents of the City of Whitewater. We have thousands of UW Whitewater students living on campus, in apartments, and in houses throughout the city. As for congestion, I would ask any one of you to travel in and around our campus at peak times during the day, with or without a road closure, and tell me the roads are not congested. The intersection of North Prairie and Main is one of the most congested intersections every day, and that's not caused by a Staren Road closure. Congestion isn't new, but it might be in a different location, and maybe you were just paying more attention because the study was happening. But the congestion is localized in and around the immediate boundaries of the campus. We're not talking about congestion on all of Main Street, and we're talking about a controlled subsection of that area. Perhaps the congestion will actually slow the traffic on Main Street to be at a more safe speed. This one's my favorite one. These students are adults with their faces in their phones, teach them to put away the phone and look where they are going. I can't tell you how many times I've heard that. To state that every person that crosses Staren Road has their face in the phone is a broad generalization that has no basis in fact, and frankly, it's an extreme stereotype bias against the campus community. I've crossed Staren Road many times, and I know that I'm not looking at my phone when I walk across that street, and there are plenty of people around me that are observably doing the same thing. I'm not going to say that there are not people walking with their face in their phones, but it's not everyone, and we can promote pedestrian safety all day, and we will never stop all of that behavior. That's like saying if you teach everyone that smoking or drinking is bad, it will stop, and we all know how well that works. And to be clear, it is not only students crossing the road. The large parking lots just north of Staren Road are used by employees and visitors to our campus every day. This closure creates a safe walkway for everybody. Pedestrian issues are all across the city, I've heard that again repeatedly. Why should the issue on the campus be fixed and not all of these other issues? We do believe that there are pedestrian issues noted across the city, and those are very valid concerns, but when a problem is very big, people can become frozen or paralyzed just trying to understand how they might move forward. To say it's all or nothing is not realistic, and frankly, not a very smart approach. To say, you cannot go from 0 to 100% overnight, you have to start somewhere. If you're going to climb a mountain, you have to do it one step at a time. If you're going to solve a citywide problem, you need to move forward in incremental steps, and you will start to see progress. Staren Road is that first step. We are asking you to support the Staren Road proposal. Let's address the concern on the most concentrated pedestrian crossing in the city. After that, let's keep moving forward to address the next location, and then the next. If we work together, we can solve the bigger problem. Thank you.
Vice Chancellor Jones, could you just maybe go over what the proposal is, just for, you know, and we've had a number of meetings, but just so everybody's on the same page, what is the request from the university in terms of, you know, the gates and the hours and all of that?
So what we've been discussing all along is taking a section of Staren Road just east of Warhawk Drive to just, to a section just near the bookstore, I don't recall the name of that road offhand. These would be gates that are automatic, raise and lower, with electronic technology that allows for both police and fire to open the gates as needed to access that area. These gates would be closed during the academic year, so the main fall and spring semesters, Monday through Friday, as long as classes are in session, so not on holidays, and it would be from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM to have a constant time during those weeks. They would be available if, if folks wanted to use them for other purposes, and the university has committed to being able to pay for the cost of the installation of those gates.
And that would also include any additional hardware that would be required for the police department to be, and fire to access, that would be included in that gate outlay?
We would, we would work through that process. We have not figured out all the logistics, so we have to make sure that, because I've also heard a commitment at one point in time from the city suggesting that there might be some funding there available, so we want to make sure that we are all in agreement, sorry, you were the one who actually said it in the meeting, in an informal meeting, and our budgets need to be approved also. So we'll discuss that at a different point in time, but we are, we are in agreement that that technology is necessary, and we are committed to making this project work.
All right, we may have questions, so if you want to just hang out in the front there.
Absolutely.
All right, I'll turn it over to council for any questions or comments at this point of either city staff, university...
I've got a question for university staff. I know you've been working with WSG in regards to this. Have you attended any of the shared governance meetings, academic staff assembly, faculty senate, university staff council to get their feedback on the closure as well, especially in your remarks noting that it was students and staff that shared the brunt of that rerouting, if you will.
So most of those meetings, you were only asked to come to those if you were asked to present to them, and we were not asked to present to them. Now, we have worked regularly, we meet regularly with governance and have kept them up to date with the governance leaders. I meet with the chancellor and the provost and the governance leaders no less than once a month, right? Where we have brought these topics up, we have other avenues throughout the campus where we have raised in different committee meetings with other larger constituents and bodies of the campus, that this is something that we have been looking at and working on. on. And when we did the trial test run, we made a campus-wide announcement to make sure that folks knew that we were doing this and why we were doing it.
But what method, were there methods then for feedback from faculty, staff, and students? Was there any survey data that was conducted on campus or anything of that nature?
We didn't do a formal survey or feedback request, but people did feel the need to chime in or request the meeting if they chose the feedback positive or negative.
What type of feedback did you get in regards to that?
A combination of both. Some students felt it was an inconvenience, but then also acknowledged that they're only there in many cases for four or five years. Others felt it was great. Many of the students that were at, were walking through that area were observed using that space more and more, and even coming over from the west side instead of using the, the crosswalk that was outside of the range, moving in there. So just those anecdotal observations show that that space was becoming more and more popular amongst the constituents that were able to use it.
Regarding Warhawk Wheels, did you hear anything about how that affected their routes as they were maneuvering students throughout the campus?
They didn't provide any concerns at all about the, the closure. We did work with different groups right away to make sure that we had pickup and drop-off zones, and there are other areas besides on Staren Road where those can be done. So, for most people, it was just getting acclimated to the different locations where they may do the pickup and the drop-off. Warhawk Wheels was one of those. We also talked with the bookstore to make sure that we could get deliveries to and from the bookstore because they have to be able to access that road. We talked about making sure that there were turnaround areas so that if someone does turn down the street incorrectly and misses the signage that says "don't come down the street," that there are easy opportunities for them to turn around and get out of that space. And as time went on, it just flowed better and better, which is why we did multiple weeks. So, we did again, just a small snapshot of time.
Any other questions?
Not so much questions, but I'm going to just read my statement, and I, I wrote it out because I don't want to forget parts of it, so. And just, full disclosure, I was on the DPW committee with Greg and Orin on this. So, to start, I want to state that at the DPW meeting on December 10th, I was not initially for this closure, but a motion and a second with a three-vote committee ensured it was coming to the council. I did vote yes to bring it to the council for further public scrutiny and to get in front of the seven council members who are elected to make these decisions for the entire community. I had asked for additional attempts to resolve this issue by use of signs, street lighting, flashing lights, et cetera, only to have it labeled as a Band-Aid. This supposed issue on Staren did not start this year, not last year, not even before COVID. Adults have been crossing that stretch of road for 50-plus years. Suggesting we must close the road and now is keen to amputate your arm to heal a paper cut. However, there are things we, the city and the UW, can do together to prevent accidents while not cutting off a major artery of the city. In the last five years, there have been only five incidents on the stretch of Staren Road we are considering, and none of them involve pedestrians. In comparison, on Main Street, there were 46 incidents, and five did involve pedestrians. I think we all recall that there has been a fatality on Main Street as well. The tests showed some movement of traffic both north to Schwager and south to Main Street. Schwager may have had a 68% increase in traffic, but even with Staren closed, Schwager still only has a 25%, 25% of what Main Street has on daily average traffic count. Additionally, the UW noted an increase of 400 cars per day on Prince Street. The intersection of Prince and Main will become congested, creating additional safety concerns. In the last five years, there have been 19 incidents at the intersection of Prince and Main, three of which involve pedestrians. Prince Street contains walking traffic for elementary-age kids attending Lincoln Elementary. Adding this additional traffic to an already hazardous intersection is foolish. We don't shut down Prince Street in front of the school for buses offloading K-5 elementary school kids, who would be more distracted and possibly make more erratic decisions such as darting out in front of traffic. As part of the transportation committee discussions with the Whitewater Unified School District, Nelson's Bus Service, and the City Department of Public Works, we have learned that parents are not sending their kids to school due to the unsafe nature of crossing Main Street. We don't shut down Elizabeth Street in front of the middle school to avoid students running across the street to their parents waiting cars on Laurel, Melrose, or Court Streets. We don't shut down possibly the busiest intersection in the city from 7:45 to 8:00 AM at Elizabeth and Walworth to allow middle school traffic, high school traffic, bus traffic, and resident commuter traffic to safely pass through that intersection, all while middle school and high school students are also walking through that exact same intersection to get to school. However, just this past fall, the UW Police Department promptly worked with Whitewater Unified School District under an existing memorandum of understanding to add paid crossing guards to that intersection in the morning and afternoon. I would ask, how is it that hard to get an additional crossing guard on the west side of Staren Road in this area we're talking about? Shutting down Staren Road goes against the recommendations of the city manager, chief of police, chief of fire department, and the streets department. I am personally against the idea of closing down Staren Road in any capacity. I'll leave it at that.
All right, Lisa, did you have any other questions? And then we'll get to Greg and Orin, Brian, if I have anything, so.
I did ask the chief of police this afternoon a question regarding some statistical data, and I will ask this to everyone who's had this conversation as a, at a staff level. Have you considered just dropping the speed limit to 15 miles per hour? Like a school crossing zone?
No, because that wasn't the request.
Because statistically speaking, pedestrians who are hit at 20 miles per hour have a 5% chance of death. At 30 miles per hour, it's 45%. If you look at the average traffic speed that was pushed to Schwager, which is still a pedestrian crossing congestion area, 32 miles an hour. I would suggest that if we are looking for a way to begin to resolve issues, that we consider reducing the speed on Staren Road.
All right, Greg, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I think the university did a really great job of summarizing all the concerns that have been voiced since we started talking about this. Trying to find the daily count on Main Street in, because we talked about 500 cars, but if you look at the per minute, or like per hour increase, we're talking one to two cars per minute, and I wish I could cite more, but I'm unable to find the slide. I think in general, there's, there's a lot of emotional speak, you know, I was really, I thought the data did, I haven't not heard anyone say the data has not done a good job representing the reality. I think it did reroute most traffic. It shows, it routed most traffic to Schwager, and I don't know, I'm still very much for this. I, I'm not completely sold on the hour, six to six, but just that, that can be changed in the future, just as we can take this away as we're, as we're putting this in place. I don't know, I think the data speaks very differently than a lot of the rhetoric we're hearing, so that was my comments.
All right, Orin?
I have a few questions for the city, and I'd also like to add that I think we can focus on multiple issues of pedestrian safety at once. I don't think this has to just be a conversation about Main Street or Staren Road. I think we can address multiple problems. But the first of my questions would be, were there any substantial university-wide events during this traffic count?
The only university-wide events would have been on the weekend, and the road was not closed at that point in time.
My understanding was that there was Family Fest on that Friday.
There was one Friday where the traffic did peak up. I was, personally, I was focusing more on the Monday through Thursday because Friday, if Friday peaks up, it's related to an event on the weekend.
Okay. My other question is, would the, are the hours set to be six to six, or how would that be determined?
Yeah, I think the question would, where, where did the six to six rationale come from in terms of that, that time window?
I could maybe just add one thing, that during the DPW meeting back in September when we suggested the two-week trial, the university was asking, I think, 7:30 to 4:00, somewhere in there. I think I suggested six to six to make it a little bit easier of a, so on the residents, they're not thinking is it 7:30, is it 7:45? Six to six, everybody knows kind of exactly when it's closed, and it covers the entire range of early commuters and late departing people.
Yep, you are absolutely correct about that conversation. Can I add one more thing too? I know the lights and the signage has been brought up. You may or may not be aware that back about, I'm guessing, five years ago, give or take, the lighting on Staren Road was actually updated by the city to make it much brighter, and if you go there at night, it's very bright, it's almost like daylight. And just within the last year, I believe it was, yeah, just within the last 12 to 18 months, we actually added, or changed out the pedestrian signage with Brad's help, with the DPDW department's help, to add flashing signage for the pedestrian crosswalks. So we've already done some of that.
Orin, Orin, did you have anything else, any other questions for staff or the university?
My last question was just what other approaches have been considered, so you covered it. Thank you.
I'm going to back up what Greg is saying in that the numbers actually don't play out very well in terms of extreme traffic on Main Street. I am a big advocate of pedestrian areas, and it is considered best practices in blue zones and across the world, if there are large numbers of pedestrians, to make it safer for pedestrians to get rid of the cars and to circumvent them around pedestrian areas. It's considered best practices. You talk to anybody who does geo design, and they will say the same thing. Most European countries have done the same thing in their big pedestrian areas, most universities across the country have been doing the same thing in their pedestrian areas. And so I am, I think this is a great idea, and I think there's a way we, you could work with the city to make sure that we can still get our, our vehicles through if we need to, et cetera. I work at the university, and it was eye-opening for me to not have to go through campus to my job. I went through Schwager, and I was like, wow, this is so much faster. I don't have to wait for people to cross the road. So I think we can make those decisions to change some of our, our practices, and honestly, I have been complaining about Main Street forever. Main Street should have two bike lanes and three lanes and one middle lane that you're, you're turning from. It should be narrowed in terms of paintings that we make it safer. We have not had the political will or the money, honestly, to be able to do that, but that would also fix a lot of the things we're doing on Main Street. So, I don't think we're pushing a lot of traffic onto Main Street, and I think we need to fix a Main Street problem that is absolutely separate from what's going on on campus.
I had a couple of questions for city staff, but also a quick one to the university, just in terms of the flow of traffic, you know, the, the time was brought up of six to six. What is the peak? I know sometimes, some days, it starts at eight o'clock, some, some days it's eight fifteen or something like that, and then there's a gap usually before night classes. So would you say, where is the peak in terms of pedestrian traffic coming from those residence halls on the other side of Staren Road onto the main kind of proper part of campus? Because six to six is a long time, and if we could, if, if this is the direction we're going, if we could make that a little bit narrower, just so that if people, you know, I know people work second and third shifts and things like that, but predominantly, you hear a lot of folks, you know, eight to five. So if there was something where people could still get through from seven to eight, and then it would reopen at around five, you could still get that traffic coming, coming home. So I'm just wondering in terms of, when is the peak, peak of kind of the pedestrian traffic at, at that location?
Well, again, the pedestrian traffic is not just the students. We have a lot of employees who arrive on campus also at the same time students are heading to class. So a lot of offices are opening and a lot of classes are being held at 7:30, eight o'clock, even going as late as 10 o'clock. You'll see the, the noon area when, you know, similar to a business where folks are coming and going, if they had morning classes or, you know, afternoon classes are going to arrive or depart during that time. And, and I would say that 4:30, five o'clock, 5:30 is, is a definite, definite peak, and that's where we see congestion on areas like North Prairie and Main that I hear complaints about all the time, where that's repeatedly backed up on North Prairie trying to get onto Main, because that's when people are leaving work, in addition to students leaving classes. So, that, you know, there's a lot of students and a lot of employees, and so during that time, you're going to get the extra bump of the employees, usually at the beginning of the morning and in the evening, because that's when most of your staff are coming onsite, if they're eight-hour staff, right? And then your faculty will come and go depending upon if they're full-time or part-time.
And do a lot of faculty park in that lot, kind of off of Warhawk? Or where do you see predominantly your commuter, or your staff permits being issued and used?
So the lots, there's two very large lots just north of Staren, just past the visitor center. So in the area where we're closing, you know, proposing to have the closure, just north of that are two of the biggest lots on campus and two of the heaviest-used lots on campus, both for commuter students and for employees and staff. It's a mixed-use lot, so you see a lot of folks there. You'll also see faculty who will park a lot over in, off of North Prairie in Lot 14 and 12 and 13, which is my guess why those, that street didn't see a lot of change. And from what we've observed is the, the less utilized lots are actually lots one and two, which are off of Prince Street, but we did see a little bit more activity in those lots with the closure.
I did have some students mention that the lot that's on North Prairie, Lot 12 by the library, it was harder to find a parking stall during the closure, because they weren't going all the way up to probably presumably the visitor center lots.
And then Chief, Chief Meyer, if you could. You know, your officers had a bit of feedback, and I had solicited them. Were there any incidents, I mean, the university has their own police force, so you're not responding there, obviously EMS would potentially be, and fire would be going on there, but were any of the things that were brought up by your officers related to an incident in that area, or was it just kind of coming through? They, they are usually using that as their, their route to wherever they were headed, probably out north of Jefferson, you know, Jefferson area.
My belief is the latter.
Okay.
Yeah, they were using that as their route through.
And, and I thought when we had put the pilot in place, we had set it up where they, you know, the, the barriers were supposed to be staggered in a way that emergency vehicles were supposed to be able to get through? Did, you know, it sounds like in, did that happen, or what was the?
So, my understanding is at least the first day when they were set up, they were closer than anticipated, but I don't know for sure if that was changed or not.
Okay. And, oh, Chief, Peter.
I can just say he's absolutely correct. First day, they were not far enough apart, but it was corrected even later that day.
And, and then the last question, you know, the, the topic has been brought up about the ability to have emergency vehicles with some kind of garage door opener, you know, similar to what we have with the flashing lights at, at our intersections. I mean, is that, obviously, we've talked about that before, that, that still doesn't shift your perspective in terms of being able to still respond and get through that corridor without, without the way?
The concern I have with that is it's, it's fallible, and how many times have we had things that it's supposed to work, it should work, but it, it just doesn't work? So if you now anticipate, yep, I'm going to be able to go this way, it's going to open up when I hit this button, and it doesn't, that delays the response even more, because now I've got to head back the same way I just came from to go the long way around. So, that's, that's my concern with it. If it worked perfectly, I'd be more for it, but it's just, whether it's ICE or, you know, just technology not working, I'm concerned about that. So, the other thing I, I am concerned about is just the population that we have on our roads. The number of unlicensed drivers we have is triple what it was three, four years ago. So I think doing something that's not necessarily expected, or that you don't see it often, is problematic.
The, maybe this is for both, both chiefs, but the barricades you're, you're envisioning or you're looking at, are they the breakaway type that, say it doesn't work, and a fire truck, you know, it's coming, or there's an incident on Staren Road in that, in that closed area, could you use the crash bars and just take out the gate? Is it supposed to break away?
Short response would be yes. You could also cross up onto a sidewalk, and I've never seen fire hesitate to break something when they need to do.
Okay. I mean, it's not like it's solid wood that it's going to.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions at this point? All right. At this time, we'll turn it over for public comments. So if anybody has anything they wish to speak on this issue, just come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And if you want to line up, that's quite all right. It'll keep us moving tonight.
My name is Stephanie Hicks and I live at 1254 Tower Hill Pass here in the city. First off, obviously for full transparency, I'm speaking on behalf of a Whitewater resident, not in the capacity of a school board member. I'm actually here tonight more so to hopefully spread some perspective. To recap, you know, we've been talking over the last three to four months about whether or not to close Staren Road due to the safety of college students. College students, mind you, that are, that are 18 years of age and are being tasked with the responsibility of safely crossing over a well-lit, controlled by personnel at times, marked 20-foot crosswalk from one side of a street to another. And the reason I highlight this is because over that last same three to four months, members of your DPW have also been meeting as a transportation committee to discuss the dangers and safety of our community K through 12 students walking and crossing over some of the most populated and highest-traffic areas in the city. Milwaukee Street, Main Street, Prince, Elizabeth, Tratt, and Newcombe. Students under the age of 18, in fact, ages 5 to 18, being asked and tasked to cross over the busiest streets in the city to get to school every day. These are streets that are not considered controlled by personnel, they're not always well-lit, or even marked. In fact, three of the six streets that I listed above, Main, Prince, and Tratt, are already considered so dangerous to this population that we are recommending that they go to both the Department of Public Instruction and the Department of Transportation to be considered hazardous. This is without, at this time, the additional traffic that the closure of your Staren Road conversation would bring to that area. So this meeting was prior to that. So help me better understand how the safety of a grown adult crossing over one road is more important or worth putting our youngest community members in danger of getting to school every day. Thank you.
Hi, Jay Craig's. I'm here for my family, Jay and Janet Craig's. We're at 178 North Park Street. Our family's lived in Whitewater for about 30 years, used Staren Road every day. Just would like to add some, what we think is important information and some of the observations of others that's come up previously. Four things to talk to. Students need to watch where they're going. Heard that. I've seen my fair share of folks not remembering to look both ways before crossing a street. But the reality is that according to the Department of Transportation, yield the right-of-way to pedestrian really means that the operator of a vehicle is required to reduce speed, stop if necessary, avoid endangering, colliding, or interfering in any way with pedestrian travel. I mean, the reality is whether it's a student or not a student, regardless of age, on campus, off campus, pedestrians have the right-of-way. So I believe the ticket for drivers who don't yield can be up to $300. Two, no one's been hurt yet, so let's try other ideas. Well, I've witnessed numerous near misses. One of the students they talked about on Main Street that was injured was a student of mine in the past. I think that we can all agree that we don't need to have a person hurt or killed before we solve a problem. So Staren Road at the bookstore is our busiest uncontrolled intersection for pedestrians and cars. That lends meaning to the conversation. About those other ideas that have been talked around, other measures have been tried and paid for by campus. Admin and student leadership have worked to add signage, blinking lights, additional lighting, all kinds of things. And social media, I believe, messaging, human crossing guards, the problem and danger has not gone away. Third thing, there are dangerous intersections for elementary and community children. This is absolutely concerning and needs to be addressed as well. But I don't think this is an either-or issue. I think it's, they're both part of a larger issue. This should be, this Staren Road that we're talking about should be addressed and also commit to addressing the other issues. Safety is something that needs to be addressed on an ongoing basis city-wide. School district using campus officers, that was mentioned, and I believe other city partners are beginning to engage in looking for solutions that are needed. My family would certainly return here to support those efforts as well. Fourth, it will significantly slow EMS, fire, and police response time. I personally find that hard to believe. Currently, our two police departments, EMS and Fire, have technology of changed traffic lights. I believe that could be, a solution could be, come up with that would work similar to lights and things. I understand the concern about technology failing, the point about breakaways, it seems like that kind of has that covered already. Finally, we, well, we talk about money. It's a consideration. Want to be clear, I, and many others, see students as members of our community. Students indirectly pay taxes via their rent, purchases at stores, their registered voters, their work here. Many live year-round as other residents of Whitewater do. I'm sure the project cost is significant, but it doesn't, it doesn't appear that people are asking the city to bear the cost of that. I guess finally, we trust and challenge the city and campus to come to an agreement that will work for most, if not all. Maybe the closure could, time could be negotiated, different closures during the summer, other, many other options I'm sure are available. My family urges you to vote in support of this project and not to wait on it. Not one of you or anyone in the community should have to face explaining why action wasn't taken before an injury or worse takes place. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to this issue.
Hello, my name is Douglas Bradley. I'm a current student at UW-Whitewater. I'm studying public policy and administration. I'm currently the student body president. I live on South Cottage Street. Frequently I hear the argument that, you know, students are adults and need to get their heads out of their phones. I think there's a misunderstanding somewhere. This isn't an issue about pedestrians. It's an issue about drivers. I drive that road almost every day and I understand how busy it can be or how hard it is to see. It may be well-lit. It doesn't mean that there's high visibility. A freshman year, I lived on campus, I crossed Staren every day by Pulliam. My sophomore year, I lived over on the other side of campus and I crossed Staren Road every day by the bookstore. And now I live on South Cottage Street and I cross Main Street every day right by the library. And I feel much safer crossing Main Street even when there was closure on Staren Road. I find it interesting when having conversations with folks on campus, just how many people have had a close call on Staren Road. Today, there was a small holiday party for the Chancellor's Leadership Council where I was informed, or I heard a story from someone who was hit by, clipped by a vehicle two years ago. And they, it was their first day of work. They were an adult who had graduated school, had worked for many years, and was newly employed by the university, and they were clipped by a vehicle. And further, I agree that there seems to be safety concerns around the pre-college schools in town, and I think we should absolutely do something about it. But it's just that, do something about it. Thank you.
I'm Dean Lesh. I live at 1260 Tower Hill Pass. You know, I feel that the road should stay open, but perhaps a longer traffic study to verify the traffic patterns and to determine if there are any increases or decreases in accident instances and make an informed decision based on factual, real-world data on what's actually happening. My son attended the university for four years and I spoke with him last night regarding this issue, as he never mentioned the problem when he lived at home. He commented that, of course, it would get busy at times with students crossing the road, however a student, he would not have lights there in road being closed. He added that it would be more of an inconvenience than a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Jane Mortenson and I live on Tratt Street. I have a very different perspective as a resident of Whitewater since 1977. I am an alum of the UW of Whitewater and a retired employee. I guess I'd like to say as an alum and as a former student and looking at the resident, I do agree that they're residents, but the bottom line is do they call it home? I have notes, and this has been weighing on me since it happened. Addressing your concern about shared governance, there may have been conversation with the leaders of the shared governance, but it was not extended to the members of the shared governance. None of them, as of right now, have heard any of the results. As a professional for campus, I'm as a driver. I drove a shuttle. One day, when they moved my shuttle to Main Street, I was coming across in the shuttle, if you didn't see it at the time, was a two-ton, 14-passenger van. I was pulling away from the library and I came up to the light at, I think it's Witten, coming out of higher. And the light turned yellow and I knew that I had to stop this heavy vehicle. And as the light was yellow, the pedestrian stepped off of the street. It didn't hit him. Was it a near clip? No, it wasn't. But I quickly found a campus police officer and the campus police officer reminded me the pedestrians have right-of-way. But I think what is not being said, and I happen to take the picture of the signage that is not, was not finished, is if you read the sign, and I have the picture here on my phone, the sign states, state law, yield to pedestrian within the crosswalk. As a professional driver on Main Street and on Staren, it can tell you that there is a majority or a half or whatever that don't use the crosswalk. It's very evident on Main Street across from the library. It's very evident on Staren between Warhawk, between Prince and Prairie. Is it the majority? Do we have a number? I don't know. Basically, having talked to my friends and colleagues on campus, it was brought to their attention, when it was told to them in October, that they wanted to close the road, number one, because of staffing, lack of staffing. And number two, they finally said, well, student government, which is only one of the shared governance. There's students, there's faculty, there's academic staff, and there's university staff.
We do have a limit. I'm trying to be a little flexible, but if you could.
I'm trying to stay calm because I have a very emotional feeling on this, but I'm very quickly going to say that there is an urban legend on campus that if students are hit, they'll get their college paid for. As a resident, and I think that needs to be addressed. As a resident, I find it very, very sad that you are not listening to your employees, the city staff. Bottom line is why would you not listen to the experts? I do agree with your point. We have roundabouts now and there's a lot of stuff, but Whitewater's small and there's some things we can't do. And by closing Staren Road, you are now putting 100% of the responsibility of driving in the community on drivers, not on our pedestrians. And just a thought, have you ever come off onto Schwager, not Staren, Schwager from Tratt and tried to come through that intersection? And the chief of police for campus had to put stop signs through Lot 8 when Tratt at Staren was closed. So I'm against it. I'm a, I believe that Whitewater's my home and I resent the fact that you want to put all the responsibility of this pedestrian crossing on me, the driver.
Hello, my name's Ben Holden, longtime resident. I hear, I work here in Whitewater. I'll say, if we're going to close that road, we should probably close every road in front of the grade schools for safety, right? Has anybody talked about maybe putting a tunnel or a bridge over the, over the road? I mean, catwalk, you see that maybe in Madison or something like that, but not close the road. First, close the road for the grade schools and then maybe the college. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Larry Catchell, 457 South Buckingham Boulevard. I'd like to propose a compromise, all sides consider. I understand the passion of the university, issues with the city, and I'd like to show a comparison. Market University, who I'm a graduate of, and I go through that campus about once a month, they have about the same size of colleges we have. Wisconsin Avenue is their busy street, much, much busier than Staren. Their dorms are one or two blocks across the street from there typically. All the campus is in a small, even smaller compact campus than here. And they don't close down the road. They have stoplights. They have stop signs, mostly stoplights. Speed limit drop, speed bumps, stop signs, especially flashing maybe during the busy hours. Force the students, since a lot of them don't use the normal crosswalks, force them through Finkin or something that they gotta, you know, to the crosswalks. Just try it for the next semester. If it doesn't work, then possibly come back and look at this. This just seems like kind of, there's only two routeways, east to west through Whitewater. Staren from Newcombe over to Tratt and Main. That's it. And I think you can solve most of the problems with something like that. Lower the speed bumps and real speed bumps. That'll slow it down. Because I think most of the people that use that, other than delivery people going through, are students and staff. Ask me, can you answer me one question? Is Staren Road their considered a truck route? Main Street is, Tratt Street is. Is this Staren?
Brett's saying no.
Brett's saying no.
I don't think, we don't know for sure? Okay. Try it out.
It is not.
It is not. It is not. Okay. Try it out and we may have the answer with less pain to all parties. Thank you.
Jeff Knight, 405 Panther Court. I wasn't going to address this issue at all, but I think there's some portions of it that probably only Patrick and I have a history here. There was quite a bit of traffic calming put on Staren Road not too long ago. I don't remember the exact date. Did the city pay for that, Patrick? Do you know?
I don't remember on the, I know down closer to Staren Park, that was part of a CIP.
Quite a bit of traffic calming.
But I'm not sure if the university contributed to the medians.
So this issue comes back in a fair amount and we never quite seem to get it. But I know when the innovation was built and Staren Road was built, one of the major, there was a major traffic study that looked at options and that was really crucial to get another corridor through town. You're about to close that and I don't think that the residents in Whitewater are going through that route between 8:00 and 5:00. I think most people figured out how to avoid it. But I do know when I first heard this potential project, the issue was that those gates could come down for the 10 minutes when the classes close rather than all day. So when I heard the all-day, that caught me off-guard. And two, I think you need to look back at the traffic study that was done when the city put about $4.5 million into the Staren Park Road going all the way through and the Innovation Center. And maybe it's time to bring in a pretty significant traffic review of all areas where there are kids. Because I do believe, the last time you did the traffic calming on Staren Road, you had a lot of people coming in and saying, look, we have serious needs for our children going to school. You haven't fixed those yet. And I think you need to do it because there have been more incidents related to the children than there is related to the students. I personally think the students would be fine if nothing happened, but I do think Larry's got a good idea and a compromise. But I think a more thorough review, because we keep coming back and doing. But I think a more thorough review, because we keep coming back and doing piecemeal stuff, and it doesn't ever seem to be handled properly. And I do think there would be some value in that to understand in more detail, in order, like Brianne's question, did the details really come up for that? But I'm very concerned when I heard the numbers that they talked about on Prince Street and Main with the kids. And I do think it is an obligation of the city council to sit down with the school board and figure out, that's a serious issue, and probably you need to take a whole-focused approach at this and look at traffic through the entire community and how you can fix it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Chuck Mills, 336 Witten. Just an observation. When I was in third grade, I couldn't wait to get to fourth, because in fourth grade you could be a Safety Patrol boy. And I was a Safety Patrol boy for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade on Warren Avenue and Majestic in Detroit, which was a 35 mile an hour road. And I used to cross at least 300 kids a day. It was a main throughway, way busier than our Main Street. And I think, yeah, I was about nine years old. That was the year they killed Dr. King. I had no problem doing that, and none of the kids had a problem. And we didn't have analog brakes back then either. If I was attending this university, I would be embarrassed to think that they were publicly stating that we weren't capable of crossing a 25 mile an hour road in front of the school. That's all I got to say on the thing.
Thanks, Chuck. Anybody else wishing to speak on this issue? Anybody online? All right. All right, so at this point, we'll turn it back over to council for any additional questions and potential action.
I'd like to make a motion for approval to close Starren Road currently for the six to six timeframe. I'd like to get some feedback on that time during, when classes are in session.
Second.
So your motion, Greg, Heather, did you get all of that?
Six to six, yep.
All right. So the motion would be to move forward with the closure of Starren Road at that east of Warhawk to whatever that little nub street is by the book center, or the bookstore, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. But you're saying you want additional feedback on that time window? Is that what?
Yeah, it sounds like it was arbitrary. And looking at the, I don't have the student count data. We have Main Street data, which is the one that's more interesting, and seems even the most interesting to the rest of the citizens commenting. It seems to pick up around eight, so I don't know if that's any indication. I mean, it's one set of data. So maybe eight to five, but I think the time is six to six. As Neil stated, I think it was just thrown out there as being consistent. Maybe it's the right choice, but I think you could be more informed.
Would you be open to possible amendments to that?
You're right to make amendments.
I guess what I'd get at is, if we can't get to, such as Larry stated, trying some other alternatives, like speed tables, lower speed limits, adding a stop sign at every single crossing just to slow traffic down, I'd love to see if we could try that before we go full stop and university invests in gates that maybe we don't have to put in. But...
Yeah, go ahead, Neil, sorry.
If we, if that's not an option, I, per John's memo, I think we need to look at some of the finer details of that before we put the gates in. Splitting costs of snow plowing and road maintenance and lane striping, things like that sort. I just don't want to get caught that if we approve it tonight, that we're stuck with the cost of everything like we are now. So my, I'll make an amendment that I'd like to see the stop signs and speed tables and speed limit lower to 15 first.
That's technically an amendment, but I think we all hear where you're coming from. We can work through it. I think everyone understands what's happening.
Traffic calming measures.
Yeah. But you could basically, you could make an amendment to basically...
We could substitute his entire motion.
Substitute his entire motion. I'm trying not to be the guy that does that, but I guess I just, I want to throw it out there as an option, and if it fails, it fails. And then, again, if it fails, I just want to make sure that we work through the small details between the city and university, that the city doesn't bear full cost of maintenance long-term.
The city, for a while, had a pedestrian committee, and that one was rescinded or merged into another group. I'm trying to remember what the history was.
The bike and pet committee is now a part of Park and Rec.
Because it is very...
It exists as a subcommittee.
Okay. Because it's very clear that there's a lot of concerns. I've got an office that overlooks Starren Road, and since that traffic study's happened, one of my suite mates and I have a thin wall. On a weekly basis, I hear, oh, I just saw another near miss on Main Street. Like, that is a regular thing in that office.
Main Street is, yeah.
I was going to say my comments addressing a lot of what was said, the comment period after the first and second. Are we at that, Patrick?
No, are you going to make a motion now, or do you want Greg to be able to, you know, make his arguments for his motion?
No, listen to Greg's first.
Greg, why don't you go ahead and make your comments on your motion?
Okay. Yeah, I'll try to cover them all. A lot of talk about, we should do this, we could have done this, we've tried this in the past, we're not doing anything. This is us doing something. That's part of why I moved. You've talked about doing more in front of the public schools. There's a committee that we formed with the school board, with the school district, to start addressing those and discussing those. Those are being discussed. I think these things can happen in parallel. They are not, you know, hooked to each other. They're not connected. I mean, that's really my two main points. We, as I said earlier, we're allowing this closure to happen. We can alter it, we can change it, we can try things. All of those things that you're talking about, speed bumps, stop signs, holding pedestrians accountable, those are all questions that we've asked, and we've been pushed back that speed bumps don't work because of snow plowing. We can't hold pedestrians accountable because it's unpopular, right? We're constrained in how we can respond to this. So it's part of why we're voted up here is to make decisions. Some comments made about going against the city staff, it's never a fun thing. Our ATV ordinance wasn't popular. Our staff didn't want it.
Golf carts.
Right? So we are here to push it. If we make a bad decision, we make a wrong decision, we correct it. So those are my arguments.
I would be interested in, Brad's looking at the chairs, but Brad's right down there. Something Greg just mentioned about the speed bumps being a potential obstacle or a concern for street, or plowing, is that, where does that, like, how big of a bump are we talking that that is a cause of problem?
Driving other communities, they are starting to put in some large speed humps in communities where they snowplow. So it's an inconvenience to us for plowing. Can it be done? Yes. Would we rather see a speed hump rather than a street closed? Yes.
And are we talking, because I know up in Madison, right by the zoo, there's two rather long speed bumps? I don't know if that's the speed table you were referring to, that you, or that's something bottom out on? But they're a little bit longer. I mean, they do their job, but they're, it's not just a simple half...
There's many different kinds.
Okay. I just wanted, you know, Greg had brought that up about, about that potential intervention being problematic for you, or you just want to make sure you have an ability to...
Yeah, we definitely do not like them. But we can manage them.
Any other comments right now, or is there any other amendments that anybody wished to...
I have one singular comment. I think you should strongly consider, if we're going to vote on closing the road, and again, you read my memo, fine, I have other points if you're going to do that. Separate the day you vote to do it with the day of implementation is one strategy, Greg, to separate the direction that we're going forward from giving us time to work out the details. And then simply just set an end time. I mean, right? We won't get dragged into the paperwork, but I think we need to document some things.
I'm all for that. I should have, I should have meant, we need a time to figure this out. They need time to implement.
You have the vote, we're going to do it, but it's not going to happen tonight at midnight.
Yep.
Well, there's a lot of particulars that I think you highlighted in your memo.
And they don't all have to be done, but at a minimum, we probably need, I would look to our attorney, we need a basic memorandum of understanding outlining roles, responsibilities, timeline, et cetera.
Yeah, maybe, is putting something together before the next semester start in fall of 2025, is that reasonable?
If you're looking for, yes, if you're looking for a verbal, no, I think so. Assuming we can get the meeting set, and I'd have to have the university speak for themselves. But yeah, that seems like plenty of time.
Okay. I'll add that to my motion.
Is the second okay with that?
Yes.
So if, I guess, if it's, if it's a possibility, I would like to amend to simply use speed measures such as speed tables, stop signs, speed limits to slow traffic, and try that for a period of six months and go from there.
I'd second that.
Actually, could you amend that to one year? Working and higher, one thing I've learned is it takes one year to learn anything, just in terms of cycles of football, basketball, summer, et cetera.
I'd go to a year. I guess I'm thinking six months, because if Greg's amendment of fall of 2025, at least six months gets us till June, and if we still need to go the original route, if it doesn't do any, it doesn't improve the situation, and we still want to go the original route, then I think that gives us, is that enough time, three months to work out MOUs?
I mean, at least, oh, yeah. Sorry, I thought you were going the other way. I was like, you need at least a semester of data if you're going for more data, but yes, I think...
Logistically, Jonathan, to install stop signs, we needed ordinance, so that would have to come back for approval so that you have enforcement.
Speed limit, too.
And I'm not so sure, you know, timeframe on purchasing a portable, you know, speed hump in the size, you know, just logistics on when we could get that installed, and if we can get it installed during wintertime. So just some things we would have to look into.
Right. Yeah, that's, I guess, that's where I'm at with it.
But it could be six months from installation, it could be six months from today.
Right. Okay.
And that we would review at that time?
Right.
That we're automatically close Starren Road?
Correct. Add additional speed measures, six months. At the end of the six months, it hasn't improved, and the UW doesn't see any improvement on their side. I think we go the full gate route.
I think, I mean, hearing the other pedestrian issues, we can walk and chew gum. I think we do definitely need to address some of the concerns, and I know there's a committee working on that. I mean, the problem is you're going to have cars, you're going to have pedestrians, there's going to be a natural friction and risk there, but the best options that we have, you know, we got to use. I think here, I mean, my concern, as I brought up in the past, is Main Street is still a concern, and a lot of it is around the jaywalking, for lack of a better term. But even at those intersections, it can get a bit dicey. So I think we still need to have this dialogue about Main Street and Witten and all the things that Ms. Hicks brought up. But in terms of Neil's amendment, you know, we do have to do something. You know, we're hearing a need, we're hearing a request, but, you know, I do software development as part of my day job, and this concept of agile methodology, like being able to nimbly, like, kind of try something, and if it doesn't work, fail fast and move on. Now, fail fast, we don't want to be an incident on that road. But I think if we can at least start with additional measures, and I'm not sure on the stop signs, is there some guidance from like the Uniform Traffic Code or whatever in terms of like, you can't have one every two feet? So like, putting it at the intersection there, plus also maybe at Warhawk, and then down at Prince, that might be a little, you know, we might run into some problems there, but as best we can to stunt some of the higher rates of speed. As Ms. Dossie Smith pointed out, that at higher rates of speed, your fatality or your chance of injury goes up exponentially. But I think this is a start, and I'm willing to support that. But I think, you know, we do hear a concern, and it's a valid one, it's just, can we iteratively approach this? Because the, closing the street is a massive change. And, you know, we shouldn't be afraid of change. We know change is hard sometimes, but if this is an option to continue to show that good faith that we're working towards this effort and exhausting all options, the nuclear option of closing the street on a very wide basis for eight, or five, or six, or whatever the number may be, it gives, it gives that argument more credibility.
To that, to that end of kind of iterative development, currently, as I sit here thinking about it, I would probably vote against the amendment and the resolution, and then just come with a fresh motion on the speed controls to make it clean. And then if that, as you put it, nuclear option was needed, then that would be a clear, separate conversation. I still know people that feel burned about some stuff with parking meters on campus. And so having clear delineations, I think, is important.
But, so your motion, though, would be to substitute in for his, or it's just...
If that can be done, yeah, substitute the entire motion.
So we can do what you're asking for, Brian, with this amendment, is basically replace what Greg had offered with...
Wanting to make sure what the specific parameters of...
And so the whole thing would be, we would be voting on the concept of this iterative plan with the parameters that Neil kind of laid forth, but then we would not, you know, it's not like, oh, if at the end of this, it automatically defaults to...
So this motion is so all-encompassing that Neil's making, if it were approved, it effectively wipes out Greg's motion? Greg, are you understanding it that way, too?
I, I'm not...
I just want it all to be on the same page.
That's why I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
I have comments as well. I'll wait.
All right.
So Greg, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah. Guys, government is slow. We're not moving lightning speed on this. We've talked about this, we've collected data, we've gotten feedback, supporting it, not supporting it. Let's get off that center. Let's do something. If it's not the right decision, we'll make a different one. Neil, all great points, why don't we try one of those in front of the public schools? And we can test these. And if that turns out to be a better solution than what's proposed tonight, based on the information we have and what's been moved, then we can make that change. But we get this paralysis by analysis, and it doesn't do anybody any good.
The only thing I would say is we are, this motion would be making that effort, and it would be 24/7.
It leaves ambiguity, and we would talk about this, we'd have the same discussions, same topic, same comments a year from now.
But if we put the stop signs in, we reduce the speed, we put the speed bumps in, that is what this motion is committing to. Now we have to do the paperwork and all the stuff that would come with that to actually enact that into law, but this is doing something, and it's something that would be 24/7, so it's not at 6:00 PM. If somebody is crossing, those measures are still in place. So, I mean, it's a balance, but it's not doing nothing. It's making an effort to address the rate of speed again, and also, you know, if you put so many barriers up in there, it's, you know, people may just kind of behaviorally self-select to go a different way as well.
And then all of your other concerns come to truth again, come to reality. Traffic on Main Street, people being rerouted, those don't go away if it happens naturally or it happens because we put stop gates.
As a teacher, the value of even giving the perception of choice is a wonderful one.
That's sweet.
Get that printed on my sheet. All right. Any other discussion on the amendment?
The amendment had a second?
Yes. It was either Shannon or myself, or Lisa, I think we all have, kind of. All right, so we're voting on the amendment, Neil's amendment, to basically substitute in this iterative approach in terms of speed calming, or traffic calming measures in terms of 50 mile an hour speed limit, looking at stop sign location, additional stop sign locations in that corridor, as well as speed bumps.
Speed tables.
Speed tables, whatever the current vernacular is. Speed tables, whatever the current vernacular is, especially leading into an intersection. All right, everybody on the same page? All right, roll call Heather.
Dossie Smith?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Brown?
Nay.
Smith?
Nay.
Shannon?
Aye.
Mysak?
Nay.
Hicks?
Aye.
So that amendment is adopted, so now we're on the main motion of, of the amended motion, which is the motion, or the amendment we just approved, so is there any other amendments anybody wished to make on this item?
So is there a decision point?
Six months decision.
Yeah, it was six months.
So it's six months we're going to reconvene and decide whether we're moving forward for fall of 2026, 25, sorry?
No, I think at, at our next meeting in January, we would expect ordinances dealing with the speed limit and any stop sign potential, so we would be enacting that straight away before the semester starts again, and then in terms of the, what was the other option? The speed tables, Brad, I know there's some logistics, because most of the ones you see are, are concrete, so if there was a, a natural or a temporary one that at least could go in, or what the cost would be to put in a paved item as well, so. No, I think those efforts, that was part of the motion, was to start that now, but then in the summer revisit the concept of how has that worked in that spring semester and then go with, and then potentially have that just, you know, move forward with the gates if that, that is the case, that there's still concerns, but hopefully we've also addressed some of these, you know, we have plans and are moving forward with some of these other pedestrian issues that are also pressing.
Yeah, I threw six months out there, but if, I, I mean, I would, I guess I could say just the end of the spring semester, was it middle of May, somewhere there, the end of the spring semester will have hard data from a full semester of this, including feedback from streets, I'm sure, as far as snow plowing and ice and whatnot, so that gives us a little over three months to move forward.
Lisa?
The timeframe of the six months would also allow for staff to consider if it were to be permanent in roving it in the next budget, should there be a need to actually pave speed humps versus a temporary installation.
And I think the, the other request I would have is if, you know, get that information, but if we do have this discussion again, is having some, John, you working with the chancellor and his staff in terms of what would an agreement look like, like what is the framework, because we've talked about, yeah, the university will pay for it, but yeah, there are some particulars that probably it would be helpful to have on the table in front if we were to consider moving forward.
You talking about moving forward with closure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like if we, if we come back to that in, in mid-year.
I would want to make one amendment then, that there is a, I'll call it a report back in Q3 of 2025 regarding those control measures.
Q2, Q2?
End of Q3.
End of Q, yeah, Q3, because that would be end of June, that way we can at least, hey, are those things working, are trucks bottoming out, et cetera?
I guess I was saying, end of Q2, that'd be the end of June, so we should know by May already?
Yeah, or end of Q2, yeah.
Do you want that as a motion or just direction to staff? Is there any objection to that from the council as, as a, just staff direction? Orin, you had your hand up.
I suppose I was going to specifically motion to amend that it be back by the specific date of June 17th, 2025, which is the second meeting in June.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, do you want to, so, Orin, you're making that motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on that item? All right, on the amendment to, on the amendment to direct staff to bring this back by the, at the June 17th council meeting in 2025, Heather, if you'd please call the roll on that amendment.
Hicks?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Dossie Smith?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
All right, that amendment passes, so now we're on to the amended, amended motion. Any other discussion on that?
I understand this to be stop signs, speed tables, 15 mile an hour speed limit, and a report back to the council at the second meeting in June, am I hitting the high points of the motion?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
And also sidebar, we're going to work on a framework for closure, but that was not put in the motion.
No.
Okay.
Greg, you had something, sorry.
Yeah, so if we're going to expect ordinances and stuff, can we have an estimated cost for implementing all these temporary solutions, potential long-term solutions, so we can let the public know what this is costing?
Brad, do you think that's feasible by the January 7th?
We'll do our best.
All right.
We know the stop sign.
That's all I can ask.
It's going to be the speed bumps.
All right, any further discussion?
Okay.
All right, so we're on the main amended motion, Heather, if you'd please call the roll.
Dossie Smith?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Mysak?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes and we'll move on to our next item of business. So next up we have item number 11, resolution creating the White, City of Whitewater trip in Kerbath Lake District, so.
Michelle, we'll give you a recap and serve as your staff point of contact, and then you can take it wherever you want to go.
All right. Michelle, do you want to give us the highlight, I know we were missing a couple folks last time, so we did bring this back verbatim, though there was a bit of debate amongst the members who were here, but we wanted to have Michelle kind of give an overview, we'll definitely open it up for public comment again, and then we've got all seven of us, so hopefully we can, you know.
Heather, how are you holding up, do you need a break?
No, we're good.
We can recess for, I mean, that was a long one, so we could recess for five minutes if that helps anybody.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, so this item was brought back to you, so thank you, and so in the memo is the same, the same information, just an added memorandum or memo from city manager, kind of stating out what options we can do to move forward, we do have the Lakes Advisory Committee, a majority of them here tonight to answer any questions, we do support, the Lakes Advisory does support moving forward with the resolution, I did receive two emails passed along by Council Shannon and Council Dossie Smith with some questions that need to be answered, in, in all honesty, I just need a little bit of time to answer all of those questions, so I'm, I'm here tonight to try to answer any questions or here to actually get your opinions and where you want our committee to go with this.
All right, so yeah, we did talk about this last time, this, this resolution is on the, it could be action tonight, so we wanted to allow those members who weren't here, if we, if they, if the, if the will of the body, the majority of the body wants just adopt it tonight, it is adjourned for that, but if there is other direction or approaches, that is also on the table as well, so Neil, I'll turn it over to you.
Just on the, on the petition process, 51% of the property owners within proposed district boundaries, which we were saying was the city boundary, right, I believe?
It was the entire city, yeah.
That would give the, the, what do I want to say, the committee or the district the ability to impact the tax levy, is there a limit to that?
I do believe it's two, there is a limit, there's, I think it's 2.5%, and, and how it works is that the Lake District is developed and then you have to have your annual meeting, and we just threw a budget out there of 250, thinking about harvest equipment and, and peers and things like that, so at the, at the meeting, they have to actually vote on a budget, and so if they don't even vote on a budget, then there's, there's nothing to move forward.
2.5% of what, 2.5% of the city levy, of property value?
That was coming from the state, so I'd have to like get the actual verbiage for you, and I know that was one of, I believe, one of your questions as well.
I took the language to mean over the pre, the budget from the previous year, but we're going to need to get into the technical details on that and probably ask someone else to put that in writing.
Yeah, Lisa?
I would make a motion to postpone this consideration until staff has had adequate time to actually provide answers to questions that have been asked.
Second.
All right, it's been seconded and postponed until staff have had time to research the questions and some of these ancillary issues, I wouldn't mind putting a date on that, just to give some predictability to the Lake District folks as well, you know, I.
Give me a second, Dave.
Which one?
Not January 7th or January 22nd, but everything else is fair game.
May 6th, 2025.
I'm good with that.
Is it unreasonable to ask for any other questions that you guys may have, even if it comes through city manager, so that I have them all?
We'll send out an email, and we'll put a deadline on accepting questions, probably around the end of the year to give people plenty of time, I'll have Becky, you and Becky can work together to arrange something formal, and then we'll get them all together.
And we will open this up for public comment, so.
I have one question about, my, my understanding was that getting the Lakes District together is pretty important for applying for grants, when are these grants due, what are their deadlines?
So a lot of them are due in April, and so we can apply for, for grants too, is on behalf of the city, that's how I did the one to try to cover for Sewer PAC, and we won't know that one until February, so.
And just to follow up on that question, does having it be a Lake District apply to the grant give it more points or more oomph for it, or is the ci, I mean, we can still apply for these as the city, but is there an advantage to having the Lake District do it versus the municipality, does that score more points, or are we more likely to, or the Lake District is more likely to get that grant?
So talking with Heidi Bunk, she has been phenomenal helping us with the grants, and she pre-looks at everything that I've submitted and kind of helps us through, so I, I believe Lake Districts get a little bit help, but also, I mean, I can't say that 100%, Heidi has, has helped us immensely to try to get our, to our best advantage.
Are these annually recurring grants, like we would apply in the following year?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not a perpetuity miss, it's we miss it for '25, we would apply for '26 in this world if they move forward?
Yeah, so certain ones are due in April and certain ones are due in November.
But we could apply next year?
Right.
Year after, okay.
Greg, you have a question?
Yeah, so in general, I am for this, what the, my biggest hangup is the 2.5% is a smaller group of people making decision on the entire community and what they're paying for taxes and where it's going, so I, I think, I know we talked a little bit last time, and we had thrown around referendums or, or, you know, non-binding referendum questions, and it sounded like that wasn't as popular because of all the other things coming up in April, but I do think we need to find a way to get community feedback, we don't have enough attendance at common council meetings, which is unfortunate, our poll co, I don't know if we're still doing it or not, it's never been a huge number, I, I would really like to see somehow getting feedback from people on what they think about it, the lakes have been controversial, everything we've done has been controversial, so I, that's my biggest hangup, I would be more for this, even if we come back, I love the grants, right, grants are grants, I love that our lakes to be more beautiful than they are, I'm, I'm not a huge fan of, of burning the entire community on the decision of, of a smaller group.
All right, that is a topic, and I did have a potential amendment to this direction, is obviously the, the referendum is not going to be feasible, but at the very least, I would like to see a public hearing scheduled at this body, maybe in February, I'm throwing around with the date, just so that there's, you know, have the five minutes, advertise the hell out of it, and, and also potentially have, I know the, the Lakes District did a tremendous amount of, of legwork and had the thing at 8:41, but having maybe a potential other, you know, community-based meetings out in the community, just to educate, because I just, I want to make sure we're clear-eyed on this, because a lot of people are going to be confused if they see that on their tax bill, and yes, we are empowered, I think we, you know, we could make that approval of the resolution, I just would prefer we have, especially if we're going to delay it, let's take advantage of that time, make sure we, you know, use our mechanisms that are part of the city and our, you know, the public hearing process, the other, you know, the, the neighborhood meetings that take the burden off of what, you know, the, the Lake District or the Lakes Advisory Committee already did, so I would make a motion to, to have a public hearing on this resolution, the second meeting in February, I'm open to when, I mean, it could be the first, the second meeting in February, that would be noticed, we don't have, but noticed on the city website, noticed on social media, you know, do the, the class one notice or whatever we do in the paper, and then also schedule four, you know, kind of community engagement sessions on this with, you know, and we would produce the material that was provided and educate folks on, you know, what, what this would mean, what the structure is if they want to participate, and if we establish this, the annual meeting, just make sure everybody's understanding, because it's not like these people directly elect those commissioners or whatever the board members, whatever you want to call them, so I just want to make sure people understand, yeah, they, they almost have more ability because they can pile in a room and have fun on that, but if we are going to delay this, I would like to make that motion to do the public hearing in February and do four community engagement sessions at various parts of the community, so I would make that amendment.
Second.
One more comment, just then, and also postponing a conversation about this, is because the Southeastern Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission is actually doing an update to their natural areas plan, so there are additional tools that are coming online and potentially even more information than we have currently that could be part of that conversation and making a holistic and informed decision, so there are public information meetings this week, December 19th.
I have a question, I'm, I'm trying to get some clarification here, because it seems to me like a resolution is a great idea, and then we can do all these public meetings, et cetera afterward, because it doesn't actually cost anything right now, I mean, there, there still has to be information shared, there still needs to be public hearings, there still needs to be a group of people getting together, a large group of people getting together, so having a resolution, I think, moves us forward, but it doesn't actually commit us to anything.
But it takes it out of our hands, so once we establish a Lake District, we're out, so.
This isn't like a resolution like we like parades, in this particular instance pertaining to Lake Districts, the resolution is the tool that the governing body uses to create, so you're right, there's no budget, there's been no annual meeting, approving the resolution means you have to appoint the members of that body, which in theory would be the council, so that must be done, and then you must have an annual meeting, those things have to happen, so you're, you're technically correct that that could result in no budget for the first year while we finish the Lakes Plan and apply for grants, but approving the resolution requires, and it's my understanding, please correct me, that we then must appoint the members of that committee, and we must make sure that the first annual meeting happens, those two things have to happen if you approve the resolution, but I do agree with you that the outcome of all of that could result in no additional expense to the taxpayer because that first meeting could have a budget of zero in theory while we work forward, does that make sense? Okay.
But with also, once that resolution is passed, 20% threshold.
Also agreed.
On a petition could create a separate body politic.
What it would do is require an election of the membership, so it wouldn't be a separate body, it would be replacing the existing committee members with different committee members, again, agreed, but slightly different variation.
Yeah, and then at that first board meeting, there is an annual election, there would be an election held, the interim board could be the council.
Agreed.
Yeah, all right, so I, you know, we have the amendment on the floor, but I will open it up to public comment at this time, so if anybody has anything they wish to add to the discussion, just come up to the podium.
Just a quick here. Kirk, if you want to. Did, did we do a, like a, just a little survey of our own to see that the other communities with the Lake Commission, what their success rate was, you know, money aside and all that, and, because we're, we're not very successful at dealing with the lake, as we can see, and I was just wondering if anybody had put those numbers together and got with the other communities that are doing such a, a project.
Numbers, no, but it's my understanding that they're highly successful, is my, my general, my general understanding is that areas that have engaged in this process have found success, and if I'm misstating it, please feel free to speak.
No, we, we invited Whit.
No, we invited water and rice lakes to come talk to the committee, and they worked through some stuff, so we can talk to Delvin, so.
And I talked to somebody a bit at Lauderdale, and a couple other guys, too, that said theirs were successful, and they just seemed to have more resources and more knowledge in how to manage the lake. So, I just wanted to make that point when you guys are discussing what you're going to do.
Kurt's at 611 East Clay Street. If there's more questions to be asked that you don't have the answers for, our committee would like to see them. We had a meeting two weeks ago, and my outbox is not lining up with any questions. So, after being up on the podium for an hour and a half last week, I thought I had pretty much answered those. The primary concern is, if we break down Lake Districts, there's essentially three ways to formal. One is, we can have 20 homeowners get together, draw out our own Lake District, vote on it, and becomes a taxing body. And the people who control it are the people of the Lake District. The next one is, in our case, because the city has, encompasses all the borders, is that you could do it as a citywide, and then you get the exposure to also combine your lobbying ability, not only with the Lake District, but also to help your sanitary sewer system, get grants from both sides to reduce the amount of flow, the amount of expenses that way. The other choice is, you could do it citywide and have the council just put it into place, and then all that means is that the council runs the first meeting. This is, and the people that come to the meeting actually are picking what they're paying in taxes. No one's, it's just the presented budget, there it is, you approve it or disapprove it, and it's done every year. It's not a long lingering tax where we want to increase our excise level, and it never goes away. So, the history is, is that the participation of members of the Lake Districts, as well as residents, and just people who use the lake, are much higher than general meetings in general. I would strongly encourage you to get the referendum on there to be approved, so that we can get going, because otherwise it just drags on, drags on. We do have a Sewer PAC report coming back, which is a long-term, 10-year study, which will give us our ammunition to go to the DNR and say, this is what we want, this is what we want. The way we've done it in the past is, we go to the DNR, and it takes nine to 12 months to get an approval or modification, because there's no long-term plan with that. This is really to be the plan of the health of the water, and water is tough to plan. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment?
Jeff Knight, back 405 Panther Court. I appreciate the attempt to do some public hearings on this. After the last meeting, I did make some comments at the last meeting, that I do think the current structure of only having seven members that all live on the lake probably is not smart when this thing goes out, because when I talked to my neighbors, nobody was aware of this. Brian over in our district, my guess is up by Hugh and Neil, there's not a lot of people on the West Side that, at least that I talked to my neighbor, that were even aware that this group had done all meetings, and they've done a good job. They did follow all the city's procedures of trying to get people there, but I think if you're going to do this hearing, something this important, with a tax component, a major change in addition government, I think you need to go all your way to go a little farther in how you let people know. Might even be, Patrick, you consider mailing to people in the city. This is a pretty big issue, and from the feedback I get, at least from my neighbors, I'm not sure it's well-received yet. They don't understand it, and I think they need to if they're going to be taxed, and I think that's an important thing you're going through. And I think at the last meeting, you did indicate you wanted to get more public input, and I think that's a smart move.
Anybody else in the public question to speak? Anybody online? All right, so we'll turn it back to council. So, we are on the amendment, which would set as part of the, amend the motion to postpone to, in that intervening time, give us, you know, do that public engagement education as part of a public hearing, formal public hearing at this body, and then also some other community-based session. So, that's the first amendment.
Was that seconded?
Yes.
Yes, somebody. Okay. Yep, all right. Any further discussion on that?
Just one quick question, do we know what the cost is to do a mailing to the entire city?
No, I'll figure it out. We should be able to with the Mueller referendum stuff also going on. Sorry, I'm already thinking about a way to reach out to everyone. We can use, let me work on it. Something I'm thinking about.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion on that amendment? All right, Heather, if you'd call the role.
Smith?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Maishak?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Dossie Smith?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
All right, now we're on, back onto the main amended motion, which was to postpone until...
I've got May 6th, 2025, with a report to council, public hearing at the second meeting in February.
Yep.
And four open house dates, TBD.
Yep. All right, any other discussion on that? Any other amendments?
And then, just as a point of clarification, we will be sending out an email to the elected officials to ask them for any questions, so we can, we will do that procedurally, it's not a part of the motion, but we will make sure to reach out, get all the questions for answering before May.
And in setting those dates, just a variety of daytime stuff.
Agreed.
All right, any further discussion on this? All right, we'll call Heather.
Hicks?
Aye.
Dossie Smith?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Maishak?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Singer?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes, and we'll be seeing this in the future. All right, next up, we have ordinance's first reading, ordinance 2024-027, an ordinance amendment of chapter 5.20.030, alcoholic beverage licensee conditions, which is our famed window ordinance. So, chief, I'll turn it over to you.
It's like Groundhog Day on this one. So, this is being brought forward again after further review by the ALC. Just a brief overview of the ordinance, it provides specific conditions for businesses granted Class A and B licenses. Section 3 of the ordinance pertains to window visibility. In 2023, it was apparent that the ordinance was vague. At that time, it was updated to require a clear vision zone from four feet to seven feet above the floor for storefront windows. It also required 50% clear and unobstructed view in storefront windows not located in that clear vision zone. So, at that, I guess some of the feedback since then, there were a number of business owners that provided examples of difficulty complying with that updated language. So, ALC convened earlier here in 2024 to create the draft amended language that you have before you, just to hit the high points on it. The changes are that the required unobstructed portion of the windows in the clear vision zoning from that four to seven feet would be reduced from 100% clear to 75%. That allows for things like open signs, curtains, things like that. Additionally, establishments that do have storefront windows in that clear vision zone would no longer need to comply with the 50% clear and unobstructed view required of storefront windows outside that clear vision zone. So, staff opinion is that the updated language still prioritizes public safety while making the restrictions more practical for business owners.
Lisa?
I would move approval with the request that we ask our code enforcement service to provide insight to whether or not other communities of our size extend that to all storefronts.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
All right, so, the motion was to approve with some additional inquiry on, from our code enforcement, on application to non-licensed premises. All right, any public comment on this item? All right, any council questions?
Then I would suggest you not waive a second hearing, so we can try and come back with that information in between.
I just, for clarification, I mean, I don't have any reason to oppose it, I'm just, says in the clear vision zone, 75% of the windows shall be free of partitions, so that it's four foot to seven foot, how far in? If they had a, if you got a, if Chuck is the bar, and he puts, and someone puts a partition three feet from him, you could see in, but you can't see the bar, and what, where is that?
Yeah, and that's the, that's the really difficult part about this ordinance, is, I don't know of a great way to describe that, because there's so many different situations.
It sounds like it just applies to the class.
It does, but it also says free of partitions
Sure.
Beyond that, and so there's, my opinion, there's got to be some degree of
Common sense.
Reasonableness that we have to use, because I don't know how to lay out.
That's my, that's my only concern, I just want to make sure that when we go to MCE with that, that they realize the same, same thing, we have to have some common sense about it.
All right, any further discussion on this? All right, motion is to approve, Heather, if you'd please call the role.
Singer?
Aye.
Hicks?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Maishak?
Aye.
Dossie Smith?
Aye.
All right, that first reading is adopted. Next up, we'll move to ordinance 2024-028, an ordinance to create section 2.08130, temporary appointments to ensure a quorum. So, Jonathan, did you want to, and then I'll turn it over to you, Neil, if you have anything to add.
Yes, there's been some issues as far as quorum with certain committees within the city. I had tried to look around at other municipalities to see if they have any sort of ordinances that would address quorum issues, really wasn't able to find any. So, I drafted this one pretty much from scratch. If you don't like it, or think that it could be done better, I will not be offended by that at all.
Neil?
Yeah, as the, as the person who brought this forward, I am completely okay with what's been written here. Ultimately, in my opinion, as the elected officials who get paid to do this job, we should never have a council, a committee, or a board, or a commission that does not make quorum. It should be on our backs to make sure that that meeting happens as much as possible. So, with this, I do like the idea that it is a round robin, so at the beginning, we would create a list of those who are interested in being alternates or fill-in, and then the council president would just work down the list on a round robin, kind of just, so one person's not doing all the work all the time, so, you know.
So, in other words, if there's like five people interested in CDA, the first time an alternate, number one would be, and then the next one would be number two, number three, or four, and ten.
Unless they weren't available, or they defer, yeah, that's my only question, is like, somebody's not available, then you go to the second one, it gets down to the person that was just on, at least there's somebody there. They were, the offer was made.
But like you would, the expectation would be one meeting, essentially, and then somebody else would take it at the next one.
And I didn't necessarily like hammer down to like, CDA has this group of people, like, to me, it was a, if all five, all seven, all five, just five of them, it's, that's for all of them, so you just keep on going, maybe two people in one week, because you got two boards that need it, I think.
The only question, if we do pass this, and it goes into effect, our organizational meeting is until the second meeting in April, so is there some provision that we would need to add in here, or just, could we create that temporary list at our next meeting in order to, you know, once this is adopted, we can at least start using it, not have to wait till, till April?
Yeah, my general thought is that you'd be able to do that, since this is a newly created ordinance, and you didn't have
It wasn't here in April, right.
In April.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve?
I would move approval of this with the addition of, at the January 7th, 2025 meeting, we create that list.
Second.
So, it moved by
I got one comment.
Seconded by Hicks, and then Greg, if you want to, if you want to go.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is to address a chronic issue with some of our committees' boards not having people. You know, if sometimes a CDA doesn't have a quorum, it's okay to miss one meeting. It's an issue when it becomes many meetings in a row. Does that address this? Are we saying we'll never not have a quorum?
No, I think we've got the mechanism to remove, we've got the mechanism to remove board members that don't show up, and we've used that in the past on the plant commission, so I don't think this is going to fix that, but it's more of, it's more to address, I don't think it's going to fix it, but I think it's going to help.
It keeps the wheels moving, because I think we've had a couple instances where, you know, CDA, or something that you've got a time-sensitive development, or something going on, and you don't want a meeting not to be held, because a quorum couldn't be.
Right. And it's some of our outlier committees, BZA is historically understaffed, and I mean not like people not showing up, like, we only have two or three members total at a time, and so when that does come around, that, that's mostly the issue staff was running into, is, and then right now, landmarks committee, and I'm not calling out any committee, because we've got 16, it rotates, just saying, with that many committees, sometimes you have committees that don't have seven members in existence to pull from all at that time, and those are the ones where we typically run into issues. It's very rare that we actually run into an issue with a committee member missing multiple meetings in a row, and then that's on the manager to bring that forward. So, I'm not trying to minimize that, I just think from staff's perspective, one of the big issues was some of the committees that just, it's hard to keep fully staffed, and the best example I have is BZA.
The only, and I have a, just a procedural question to, for Jonathan, or whoever can answer it. So, like, with BZA, right now, there's no council rep, and the BZA could appeal, I mean, they could appeal variances, but I don't know if there's any action of a council. I know you couldn't have a plant commissioner also sit on the BZA, because the plant commission, they may be appealing something the plant commission decided. I don't know if that's the same case with the council, so that would be one to just explore. And then also, if for some reasons, you know, there's already two council members on the CDA. Those two are available, but two citizen members are not. So, then the council members get called to do it, then there's a, then it's basically a council meeting at that time. So, I, that's the other kind of logistical process question that I just wanted to make sure we understood, because if it's a one-off, and it's just one, or they're replacing the council rep, that's, that's not an issue, it's when it becomes a meeting of this body, because there's a quorum of us, then what is, what does that mean?
I see, I mean, it's somewhat laid out in number 2A, but maybe we need to specifically list which committees and boards are going to be unavailable to this. I came up with this with the idea of like Parks and Rec and plant commission specifically, but.
I just want to make sure we understood, I mean, if it's okay, it's okay, but I just want to make sure, I mean, we noticed some that a quorum of the body may be there, and technically, they're not operate, you know, it's not operating as a council, but...
Is there more concern that you would actually have just four council members voting, so like adding a line where council members won't be used to serve in a situation where it would result in more than three
Yeah.
Members of the governing body on any committee? Can this be added with like rider language?
Lisa?
Possibly, but also that it doesn't state one council member. So, I think that it's important to not have a quorum of the council, and it's important that the council not be the quorum of that committee.
Agreed.
Because that's just too, that's too heavy-handed, that negates the purpose of having the committees in the first place.
Unless it's one of those committees that is of the council, but that's not what this is for, like, it's not for the finance committee.
Yeah, in that case, at a finance committee, or alcohol licensing, or
DPW.
DPW, I mean, a
You can just skip that and go to the council.
Yeah, we could, or we could just sub in a council member, and it's not, there's only three members, you're never going to get to a majority of the body, so.
You taking notes, Jonathan? Okay.
All right, so there is a motion to approve it.
Do you want to make an amendment for us to address the two things I think we took notes on? Which were?
I will throw that on mine, because I was the one that made the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Is there any objection to that, of the amendment through unanimous consent being changed to include those concerns?
Well, one specifically is, the council shall not be an alternative if it results in a council quorum, and then what was the second one?
The opposite way, that the quorum is created.
So, that the council is the quorum
Yeah.
Of the body. So, if they're not using BZA, because I think that the council shouldn't be on the BZA, like personally, I think that just shouldn't happen, I don't think the council should be on the ethics committee, just straight up. But, so the council shouldn't create a quorum of the council, it also should not be the quorum of that committee.
I see what you're saying, okay, so the two things are that a council member shouldn't be appointed in a situation where there would be a voting majority of the council be appointed in a situation where there would be a voting majority of the council on the committee. And then the second point is, this shouldn't be used in a situation where the majority of that committee would be council members. Those are the two. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you couldn't have four members of the PRC be council members, the two existing ones, plus two council members from the alternate? That would violate both rules. One, it'd be a quorum of the council, and two, it would create a quorum of the committee solely of council members. Wow, that is weird language, but I understand what you're saying. You gotta give us time to clean that up.
Say, say four is the quorum for landmarks, three council members.
Would create a.
And one, and one citizen shouldn't be used to create the meeting, because it's a three to one.
Does that make sense to you, Jonathan?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the only, if you're fine with adding and also identifying those incompatible committees, like PFC would be one of them, BZA.
Just ethics.
Yep, just going through those and just making sure. If there's no council rep, really, what can say, like, this is something.
Do that to the third name, see if there's any incompatible committees to use alternatives?
All right, so the motion is to approve the first reading. At the second reading, we would have those changes for consideration. Is that?
Okay.
All right, I'll open it up to public comment on the ordinance.
Nothing.
All right. All right. Uh, any other discussion from council? All right. Uh, roll call on the motion to approve this first reading with those requested changes for the second.
Smith.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Mychek.
Aye.
Shannon.
Aye.
Dossie Smith.
Aye.
Hicks.
Aye.
All right. First reading is adopted. So next up, we'll move on to item number fourteen, discussion of possible action regarding public safety referendum question. Who is?
Dan and Rachel can get you where you need to go, and then it's really about the council having a conversation.
All right. And we will open this up for public comment as well. But Dan and Rachel, if you wanna kind of give us the overview and cover some of the material in the packet, I don't know if you have the, if you're pulling the PowerPoint up or.
Four slides, I think is what we have, right?
It'll take me a while to bring it up on the internet if you wanna.
Can you try?
Yeah.
And I think, just for clarification in terms of the action requested tonight, so this is to give additional feedback, but not set the final question. That would be done at the January seventh meeting. So there is still one more time, this is kind of wino, you know, narrowing down what, what that could look like, but we are not taking action on setting the, the amount in the question.
What we're basically asking is even if you guys just come together on a straw poll consensus of the amount you would like in the referendum, you give us time to explain that to the public, you give us time to get all our materials together, and then we would come to the January meeting asking for that final approval.
All right, Dan, if you wanna start?
Yeah, Rachel and I are gonna kind of tag team this one. Um, sorry, we don't have it up on the screen here yet, but I'm gonna touch on that first slide about improving police department operations. Um, I think, so what I'm gonna do is just run through the ways that we're working within the police department to increase our ability to respond to the increasing demand that we're seeing. Um, to me, it's important that this be touched on, because we don't take the consideration of a referendum lightly. Um, and, and there's been a great deal of work done already to minimize what's being included in that referendum and those, and those options that you're gonna look at. Um, so running through the list here, obviously the cops hiring grant, that's something that, um, everyone here is aware of all the things in this list. This is really more speaking to the community here to make sure everybody's clear. Uh, but that cops hiring grant, that's, we were awarded a total three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for three, over a three-year period. Um, second, we have a pending, uh, federal appropriation request, um, for a city immigration liaison position. We should know in early twenty twenty-five whether or not that's gonna be approved through the federal budget. Um, obviously, the detective staffing increase that was approved by this body, uh, to be included with the twenty twenty-five budget. Moving on to the records specialist, our position descriptions have been adjusted, and they have been re-categorized in the salary resolution. Um, records technician, that part-time position is planned to become a full-time position through, um, what we believe will be increased revenue in twenty twenty-five with the video, video redaction fees based on a law change, uh, as well as parking ticket increases, um, that were approved here recently as well. Um, evidence garage, that is at least partially financed. Um, we're gonna have to figure out exactly what the anticipated cost is for that, um, and we're, we're working through some of those details. More will come before you here in the next month or, or so on that. Um, and then dispatch tech. Um, right now, our emergency calls automatically roll over between our dispatch centers, between us and the county. We're working with, um, GenCon to see what the feasibility is to have all calls roll over in that same manner. Um, I don't have an answer on that yet, but we're working toward that. Uh, one of the things that I forgot to list on here as well, um, we're entering into an MOU with the City of Waukesha, um, that provides us with twenty-four-seven access to their forensics lab. Um, that's gonna allow us to much more quickly, uh, look at, do our phone downloads and things like that. So again, just looking at the ways that we are, um, addressing that need to better respond to the, the demand that we have, um, this, this, again, the, the ask for the referendum for, for the community to, to consider that is not taken lightly. So we're doing a lot of work on the front end, um, prior to that. That, I'll turn it over to Rachel.
To deliver the evidence.
All right, I gave you guys three options. Um, option A is a complete fulfillment of the, um, the request from Mueller. Coming in, the total dollar there is like one point eight. Option B is what we were asking for, uh, would include the four patrol, one detective, two hundred and fifty-four squads and outfitting, dispatch, and the SRO was adjusted to the forty percent, since that is what is currently, um, budgeted for, coming in at one point one seven six. And option C is kind of bare bones, and includes, um, like the flock cameras that would not be budgeted for otherwise. SRO, dispatch. Each one of these options is gonna give you subtotals that are also gonna give you right on, I mean, that way I don't have to calculate all this stuff all over again. But you guys can kind of see what that impact is overall on, um, the mill rate. I did come up with a cash flow for the capital, is something that was requested.
Are you, are you talking about specifically how we would invest the roll-up money while the cops grant is taking place over three years until we have to pay the full load?
It would be. It would consider the, if you were to do the two hundred and fifty thousand for the capital. So this kind of like, this lays out what option B, what that cash flow would look like for option B.
So then the interest costs saved on the bottom road, that's on a per year basis, correct? Or is that?
Nope. Okay, so we've got the, the top, we can consider the revenues or the cash flows that are coming in, right? Then each year, what we would expect that expense to be, and then at the very bottom, I just kind of assumed an interest rate of four and a half percent, let's say for twenty twenty-six. Um, the cost savings would be, if you were to take the three hundred and seventy-one thousand that we would expect to spend, calculate over ten years, that's what the interest would be for a ten-year loan at that interest rate.
But we're borrowing each year, right? So there's interest savings in each year. I just wanna follow your logic here. So we'd save ninety-seven thousand over the borrowing of the three hundred and seventy-one thousand.
Correct, over ten years.
Then the following year, we'd save a hundred and four thousand on the borrowing of the three hundred and ninety-six thousand. Am I following your logic correctly?
Yep. So it's just total impact over the ten years recognized in that year. Otherwise, it would be, I would have to add up.
Yep.
And, you know, do schedules and make it a little bit more complicated.
I think the point you're making is there's significant savings in paying for these things without borrowing, especially equipment that only lasts three to five years.
Correct.
Okay. What else? From Rachel, sorry.
Got the referendum question that they had proposed with areas for you guys to look over and make decisions on. Um, the rest of the information that's in the packet is all backup, so that you can understand how we got to the numbers that we did. Should you have any questions, yes, the mill rate, um, the median home price in Whitewater's, two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred. So it kind of targeted what that would look like for the majority, or the median, uh, group of.
So if I'm reading this right, and the council did decide to go with option B, just for argument's sake, it's in a big red box and it's easy to see. And then we went to the other big red box, box going horizontally, and then the yellow line, you're telling me that the average home price of two hundred and forty thousand, using option B, the impact would be about two hundred and fifty-two dollars per year in Walworth and a hundred and ninety-two in Jefferson.
Yes.
Just wanna follow your logic for the public on the record where it's recorded.
Yep. And then I also broke it down per month.
Thank you.
In your options on B, where is the flock cameras?
So if, that would actually show back up on the cash flow?
Oh, okay.
Because that's gonna be included in there.
Is, is that in that, yeah, where, where is that in the option B on the?
Are you paying for that out of the two hundred and fifty thousand per year for equipment, the flock cameras?
Right, it would come out of, it would come out of that, the savings.
So it's really two squads plus capital?
Yeah, if you go to.
Two squads plus the flock roll in is what the two hundred and fifty thousand covers?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Not all capital, some capital. Because like, it's not, doesn't, not covering computers, not covering, you know, weapons, things like that.
The, I had a question on the SRO. So this is a potential additional SRO for the middle school.
Agreed.
It's a forty percent split with the, uh, um, school district.
Agreed.
Have we had discussions with the school district, um, with the administrator on their appetite for funding this? Because if, if there's no appetite, I mean, do we include that or not?
I'm working on it.
That's all I can say.
I mean, we know school safety is important. I mean, that, that, that is the issue, but I, I also want us to be, you know, if we ask for this and we don't get the, get the agreement with the, with the school district, then.
Yeah, meetings have been had, and, um, we're not there yet.
Are you close?
No, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't say we're close.
Okay. So I, I just wanted to ask also on option B, and well, I think all the options. I know in the twenty twenty-five budget discussions, we had included the detective using some other money that was identified by John and Rachel and the team. And now it is included in the, the referendum. So if we were to pull it out, because that was our goal, was to show that, that good faith investment, that would put pressure on that self, that insured fund, and, and we'd have to continue that moving forward. So I, that's why I'm torn. Like, you know, I.
I'm with you.
I would like us to kind of be able to, to, to pull the detective out and maybe add another patrol officer, or add a dis, or there's a dispatcher in option B already. But like, you know, I, I would like us to see if we could massage, or just reduce the ask, um, depending on, even though I think the difference between option C, when you're talking about two hundred and one dollars versus option B, which is two fifty-two Walworth numbers, versus option A, which is like four-ten. I mean, to me, option B seems to be that sweet spot, but playing within there just because of the uncertainty of the SRO, we technically have funded the detective.
Yeah, and again, this is staff's recommendation.
I'm just saying, like, is there other, other things we can fit within there to maximize the effort where if, even though we believe in SRO, like if we added another patrol detect, or a patrol officer instead of the detective or the SR, you know, we, we use some of that and bump it up to five. If the school district then comes to the table and says, yes, we want an SRO, you could potentially use that fifth officer to, but we're being upright, like a hundred percent upfront, is gonna be the, the cities, and you can use that officer how you wish. I just don't wanna get us hamstrung because we can't, I mean, look at the, the aquatic center agreement. I, I don't know.
I like where your head's at, as long as we all recognize that the cost of adding an officer instead of the SRO is actually going to move the price.
Well, that's what I'm saying. The detective is also on the question. Do we eat, you know, do we assume that cost as part of our, what we already did, and take it out of the referendum and, and put in an officer? So I'm just throwing stuff out there, because it sounds like, you know, there is some plug and play here.
I thought we did already assume the one detective, what we did, or is this the second detective on top of the?
This is basically moving the, the cost of that detective to, to the referendum instead of the way we.
And then proposing moving forward to fully fund the health insurance fund.
Yeah.
Moving forward, if the referendum is approved. If the referendum is not approved, we stick with the budget. And again, this is just staff's recommendation. This can all, that's why we have till the seventh. And then I, I just want, one thing I wanna point out with the SRO, and then I'm gonna get out of the way again. It's in there, one, because the study calls for it. Look, I'm not gonna be, uh, uh, there's that bias, because some emergency just happened, but we've had thirty-four school shootings. I forget what the, the number is. We've had several in Wisconsin. Dan and I spend literally every one of our bi-weekly meetings covering emergencies such as this. The reason we're asking for it is not simply to add staff. We have one officer covering five schools geographically and nineteen hundred students. It's about ratio, it's about drive time. That's where we're coming from. For us, it's always about how fast can we get there? What is the span of control? So that's, I kind of like Patrick's idea, recognizing it, it, you'd have to move some things around, being fully transparent with the taxpayers about bringing in another patrol officer, but also being fully transparent with our staff, that if it comes down to another SRO, we would drop down from the five patrol officers down to four again, convert one to SRO. I like where everyone's head is at. I'm simply pointing out the SRO from our perspective, we feel it's a need.
Yeah.
It's not like a want, it's not something we'd like to have. We feel with the amount of children and the geographic location of the schools, we simply need another law enforcement presence that's available to respond. Having said that, it's up to you guys.
Now, there is kind of a escape hatch usually on those where it's like not to exceed X dollars, where then if that SRO thing did not work out, that that could just.
I'm trying to go back to our question and see if that was baked in. The tax being imposed, limited, shall.
But we can't have like an annual in the question.
By a total. Okay, so we could change the wording to a total not to exceed, and then if that agree, what you're saying is if that agreement doesn't come to fruition, we simply don't spend the money, or don't raise the levy. That's another option.
I'm looking over at the lawyer, too, to just confirm that interpretation of it.
I think that's allowed.
But even if we added that, if we tweaked something and added that fifth patrol, we could as a city say the SRO is a need. Even if the school district is not willing to pay their share, a portion of that, you know, you, we could offer that as, you know, as a public safety need. It's not, I mean, the school district, we wanna have as a partner in that, but if we really need support for our current SRO, but having the flexibility that it, it wouldn't be a hundred percent.
I wouldn't give up the other sixty percent so easily, but I see where your head is at.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to say, we gotta do what's right, even if we can't, but also giving the flexibility and being honest with the.
We, we did look at other communities, um, anticipating that that comment would come up. Like, if it's a need, don't we just pay the full hundred percent? We couldn't find another community that, anticipating where, where you're going, we couldn't find another community.
But even if it meant to spell the, you know, cover in vacations, I mean, what happens when that SRO is on paid leave or?
When that happens, there's not a designated presence in the schools.
Okay.
It's first shift that covers any calls that come up. And, and they're more so, um, contacting us when it's more emergent. They're not contacting us for detruency issues. They think they, they will, um, hold those until our SRO returns.
Do we have an MOU with the school district for the SRO?
We do.
Is it supposed, is it, I guess I'm just curious, is it supposed to be like someone's there ninety percent of the time, a hundred percent of the time, seventy-five?
It's not laid out that way.
Okay. So in theory, if we had two SROs, there's a possibility that none of the schools could have either officer or if there's something going on in the city?
So if we had to, we would make a, make it a very, um, make it an emphasis that there would always be one working, so that they're not taking vacation the same days. Um, and already, our SRO saves vacation for summertime when school's not in session, but, um, whether it's, I mean, any other type of leave that we can avoid other than court, we make sure that we have somebody here designated in the schools.
So the schools aren't typically left un, unstaffed with an officer most of the time?
Yeah, it's rare. It, it does happen, but again, we have officers working first shift, and they're, they're going to be there. It's just, that's, they're not in the school.
Right.
Dan's going. Uh, Greg, you had a question?
Yeah, just a little bit, maybe we're getting into a lot of specifics. Um, in general, we're asking for a sum of money, um, to be used ideally in these ways, but at the end of the day, we're gonna make decisions, the police chief's gonna make decisions on how this gets distributed. So, you know, if, to, to your idea, Patrick, if we, if we just go to the patrol officer, and we have a detective in there, and we had other ways of paying for that, we can still make that decision. We don't necessarily need to iron that out now, do we?
I see what you're saying, because the delta's really forty grand on the difference between a detective and an officer. So I think where Greg's coming in at is, why don't we think about setting a number? And because at the end of the day, ultimately, we're gonna ask the police chief to deploy. And because at the end of the day, ultimately, we're going to ask the police chief to deploy that money to bring the right amount of officers and detectives in. Is that kind of what you're saying, Greg?
Yes.
Okay.
I just don't know, when we ask, when we move for the fire department referendum, like, you know, we're asking to exceed a levy with a specific purpose. It's not like we can take that money and go, oh, well, we jack the taxes up a million dollars and the voters agreed, and then we're going to go spend that on, you know, something else, parking rent.
But is a referendum contractual to slide number twenty-five?
It's contractual to the public safety, which is what we had for the fire department. We dug into the weeds on that, and we didn't even segregate between the capital that we now do and the personnel. We simply laid that out over the course of the education. It was a one point two, one point one-five million dollar lift, and then it was part of our educational program that we said we're going to put three hundred and eighty-five thousand away for capital. Again, we anticipated that question, so we backtracked to find the old referendum question and then did the fire referendum question. So again, yes, Greg, it can be done on a macro level where you're more really talking about where are we landing between this basically one point oh-six and one point two-six, and then we can iron out the details after the referendum is either approved or not, and then over the course of the education, we can certainly talk about how the plan is the patrol and so forth. I'm not trying to go on ad nauseam, but you guys are saying the same thing, Greg's just taking a slightly more hands-off approach.
Any questions, always, I'd open up for public comment at this point. So open up for public comment, anybody have any input at this time on the referendum question, size, scope, budget? Anybody on that? All right. So any, are you looking for a motion tonight, Sean, or are you just looking for general direction around like, say, option B?
I'd like to see if you guys have, if you don't have consensus, we go back and do more work on questions. I'd like to see if the, there's seven of you, I'd like to see if you have consensus around, like, for example, do you have consensus around keeping the detective budgeted within the budget and then making that a patrol? That's a great thing to know. And that way, we can dial in the number between now and the next meeting. Those are the things we need. Do you want to budget for the SRO? Those are the things that would really, really help us out. Do you prefer that the SRO become an additional patrol that we can unwind? Let's just have those conversations, and then we can probably build something for January.
This actually might be a question for Chief Meyer. The admin assistant going to full-time, obviously, it would help, but could you speak maybe to if there's anything specific that it would help with or something like that, why, you know, kind of what the thinking was between that and something else when we went from plan A to plan B?
Yes, the admin assistant to full-time, it's, well, it's a records technician. That was one of the things noted in the FISH study, and a lot of that had to do with the amount of redaction that we're doing now. So much of, you know, YouTube is a huge driver of that. We get a ton of requests. We've had requests for enough video where it's costing people eight hundred dollars, and they're still requesting it because they're making money monetizing it on YouTube. So just that process alone has changed how many requests we're getting, and they're just getting jacked.
The difference between A and B, to answer your other question, A is the full-fledged, basically, recommendation of the study for the first year.
Yeah, but my thought is, why was that one of the things that was removed when cutting it down?
Oh, we also increased our fees, and we're hoping to handle some of that cost because we already, the council already initiated a fee increase, and that's hopefully going to offset that, so we do not have to take it from referendum. Sorry, I didn't understand your...
Sorry, same here.
Yeah, but like, what?
It's because we're hoping to handle it elsewise without increasing the levy.
Yeah, so you're looking for feedback. My feedback would be, you know, I like B. I think we take the SRO and make him a patrol officer, and if we can work some off the school, amazing. If not, we're doing what was suggested, and Chief will manage it.
Greg, does that come with keeping the detective in the budget? Because the reason I ask that is just simply shifting the SRO to a patrol officer, it just, it increases the ask, so I just want to, I just want to know where we're headed.
I think we keep it in. I think that's, I mean, that's a, it's a risk. I don't know if I can even label it manageable risk, because if something big happens, it's... So I'm fine with leaving the detective in.
That's all, I just wanted a clarification, I'm not trying to drive the bus.
The only thing is, you know, the detective, if we did sub it out and just ate it as we have, is, you know, being able to bump that SRO to a patrol officer that's full-time and potentially wrap in, you know, in option A, there's a significant amount of other capital outlay that was listed out, is could we absorb some of that since we're already technically paying for the detective? I'm just trying to, like, how do we piece it all together where we get the best bang for our buck because we're asking the residents to shoulder, you know, two hundred and fifty-two on the average home and, I mean, that's not an insignificant amount of money for some folks.
So in your world, Patrick, if I'm just going to continue re-describing what I think I'm hearing, it would be leaving dispatch out of it, you'd be talking five patrol, zero detective, two squads, flock camera is the one thing I see from the capital that's not carrying over. Am I, from option A, am I reading that right?
No, I'm looking at B. So if you look at B right now, it's four patrol, one detective, two squads, which includes the flock.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And then one SRO and one dispatch is detective zero, SRO zero, patrol five, and then squad slash capital gets bumped up with what was in C, or A, sorry, in A, to give, you know, our officers the equipment they need without us having to borrow or...
So bump capital up to five fifty-two instead of two fifty?
The difference of like that detective, so whatever, okay, take the detective out, make the SRO a full officer, and then whatever is left, use that to bump up...
About twenty grand. I'm with you. Okay, I understand that.
I'm just throwing that out as a, as an option, since we do have the detective in, but if we, if the consensus is to leave the detective in here and not fund it the way we had done in the twenty-five budget, I'd still be interested in potentially looking at the SRO bump up and just adjusting that levy request for whatever the difference is to go with another patrol officer. That would be my take, but Neil, we'll just go down the list.
I just, if we remove the SRO officer altogether and reappropriate that anywhere, and say the school district comes back in a year or two and says, we need that next officer, how hard would it be to absorb that, say it's eighty thousand at that time? I mean, the budgets are tight as is.
An additional expense, it would be hard, but what I think Patrick's trying to set us up for is we would go from five patrol officers back down to four, shift that patrol officer over to SRO.
And you were saying once, I think what, I think what Greg was saying is, we're just looking for a bucket of money, we can move positions as we want to, to...
But I still think a coherent plan with like, this is what the money's going to be used for, is helpful in selling them.
Agreed and agreed. I get what Greg's saying, and I think having at least a structure to it helps.
Brian?
How hard would it be to move a patrol officer down SRO? Seems like that's a little bit of a pain point.
It's not, well, sorry, I'll go with Dan.
Yeah, no, I think, I don't see it being an issue, honestly. It's a, it's an assignment, it's not a promotion. We can pretty much unilaterally do that.
You actually get weekday hours during the work week, and you get your summers flexible, which is if you're a young officer that's normally on night shift, this becomes an attractive position.
I don't see that being a problem.
The issue's the funding. It costs us, the reason Patrick's asking us to make the adjustment with the detective is to carry the patrol officer until such time they get converted to an SRO, we're paying a full one hundred percent.
But then that forty percent would come in, we could use it for capital or other things at the time, yes.
And having a neighbor that was a police officer, I can attest to the, when he had kids at home, getting the SRO position was a positive thing in his household. To make, to confuse the waters a little bit more, one other option would be to take the detective here and then take the, cut the, remove the SRO, but take those funds. Oh, no, because, I was going to say, put that to the insurance, the...
Oh, add the fifty in, yeah.
How do you feel about dispatch? Oh, Lisa, I suppose you have to say something.
Lisa, did you want to weigh in? And then Orin and Greg again, if there's anything. Lisa?
I'm going with B.
Greg, did you have anything else you wanted to add? And then Brian, I'll get there.
Nope, I got my comment, too.
All right. Orin, any thoughts, any feedback at this point?
I agree with you, Patrick, on the allocation of funds, that direction, and it sounds like it'd be pretty easy to move back to an SRO if needed.
The difference is like twenty grand. The one sixty changes to one forty and becomes a detective is essentially what you're, you're following my logic on that. And then the SRO becomes non-existent.
The only question is the detective and where, you know, do we leave it in, do we leave it out, and then make investments in some of the other things that were in A, like the capital outlays that, you know, you defer and you defer and you defer, eventually those chickens come home to roost. But I know we did take a bit of risk with the, funding the detective by, you know, using the savings from the change to our health insurance and a couple other tweaks that were made that will put pressure on the twenty-six.
Okay, I see what you're saying, just make the total about one point one million, which is effectively lopping off the SRO, and then reallocate the expenses to fund a patrol officer, and then everything else falls in the capital, which is a really weird way of saying it, that's like following the pebbles as they roll down.
Yeah.
Hate to say it, but we just kind of need a ballpark number. Are we at one million, one point one million, or one point two million, which is, everything is laid out plus the dispatch?
I would be fine with the one point one seven, which would be the two hundred and fif, on an average home, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eleven cents and one ninety-two in, that's Walworth, one ninety-two oh eight in Jefferson as the starting.
As a proposal, as a proposal that the voter then gets to decide on.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So you're saying one point one seven?
Can I sort of make one hot question? So the intent with that strategy then is to retain that detective though, long-term? Is that correct? Is that what you're, okay.
Yeah, the detective would be funded through, what we already did, and John and Rachel have to figure out how to continue that with the other budget pressures, but this, and like you said, we could, at the next meeting, I mean, think about the detective in that. I mean, if there are some good arguments to really move it in, let's...
In this world, the detective's already hired, and you're simply shifting the monies for the detective to a fifth officer, which could then become the SRO. I hear you.
Yeah.
We're all good with the ninety-four thousand for dispatch? I just want to clarify. I'm seeing heads nodding, that's good. Okay, what else? I don't want to make it that simplistic.
Any...
Updating the language, just the not exceed, just...
Not exceed language?
I just want to verify, so if we go that route, the evidence garage is covered with internal budget?
That's to be determined. We had a meeting earlier this week, and based on, this is ideally a similar building to what was put up for water just on the northwest side of Aaron and Fremont there. And that building was, Brad, do you remember what it was? It was a shade under nine hundred thousand dollars, so much more expensive than I would have anticipated. So if that's the case, we're either going to have to reevaluate what kind of building we're looking at, or potentially do something like a design phase and then a borrowing for a construction phase. But we'll bring, the plan is to bring that before you, just an initial RFP, location, things like that, to get the ball rolling on it. But just hearing how expensive that building was, was kind of, it blew me away a little bit. So what is, there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that's already been borrowed, that's the amount that we have to work with, and that would need to be done, I don't remember what you said, but early twenty twenty-six is when that has to be spent, if I remember what you said.
And I'm hoping between that time to augment that with some unspent monies from this year and hopefully some projected unspent monies the next year, which would hopefully limit the borrowing to negligible, is what we're, the plan is still to very much try and make sure this is taken care of without additional levies to the taxpayers. That is still the goal, and I still, we have, might have do some scoping, I get it, but I think it's achievable.
Greg, did you have something?
Where is the not to exceed verbiage going?
Oh, okay, so if you look at the referendum question itself, sorry, let me flip there real quick. It's a big question, you'd think it'd be easy to find.
Page two twenty-eight.
Thank you. Okay, so down on one, two, three, four, five, about seven lines down, where it says, shall the city of Whitewater be allowed to exceed the limit, increase the levy for the next fiscal year, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, by a total of not to exceed percent, which results in a levy of blank? So we're going to put a not to exceed where we start to talk about the projections of what the increase in the levy increase is, and I will check that all with Jonathan and, I don't know, if we need Mueller or someone from them. That's what it was essentially, instead of changing it to a hard and fast increase on an ongoing basis, it would be a not to exceed increase on an ongoing basis.
Okay, yeah, I was just interested in what other things impact that percentage that could burn us or make it appear like we're not being transparent.
Does that clear up any concerns you might have, though?
I don't know if it makes it clear, just because the paragraph already has be allowed to exceed, and then in the same sentence, we're saying not to exceed. It's two different things, but it makes sense.
We can work on the question, too.
I'm on cold medicine, so.
Yeah, if we could just check with, maybe Allers or somebody that deals with referendum questions.
Because in theory, if you said not to exceed, you could consider that COPS grant as a way to smooth into that amount over a period of time, instead of the full one point one seven that next year, you could, you could in theory...
In theory.
Smooth it.
I don't know if that's allowed, the multiple increases, that's another thing I'd have to check on. That I don't think is allowed.
Well, that's the, that would be the question, is like, is that...
All right. But Brian, what I understand the intent to be is to put us in a position where if we don't have to raise it by the maximum amount because of whatever shakes out, we won't do it just because we have to, is what you're looking for.
Exactly.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion on this? All right, so you have John.
One point one seven six million, not to exceed language, look into that, and we've got to come back next month with the revised plan, which includes the shifting of the detective to a patrol officer, the SRO to patrol officer. You and I'll talk. I get the gist of where you want to go, we've got to move the nomenclature around, but stay within the one point one seven six million.
All right. Any other discussion on that?
Okay.
This is not a, this is not a, is this like a ten-year or is this a perpetuity?
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity.
Yeah. It doesn't continue to increase it by that amount every year, it increases it once by that amount, and then we can go forward and institute our annual increases on top of that.
It builds the base to that.
Yes, that's a better way to say it.
All right. Any other discussion on this? All right, so we took care of fifteen and sixteen on earlier action, so next up, we